Computer. So you went in there for a propel?
How are you?
Oh, that was fine, yeah.
Yeah, I ran down that hall that you got along the lake.
Ah, ah, ah.
It was crazy things out there, so you must've went around the police if I went back to that door.
Yeah, it's like down the creek.
My lake is as long as.
Yes ma'am. Scott is your...
Yep. We all ready? Is our microphone and podium ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Calling to order the Pearland City Council Special Work Meeting for April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. It is six oh two P M. Welcome, thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate those of you who are in the audience. Um, we don't have any opening ceremony here, so we'll go right into Declaration of Conflicts by City Council members.
No. No mayor.
No mayor.
None.
Alright, so item number three is the A G M Annexation Agreement Discussion. And we will just start there. Do you wanna queue that up then, or do you want...
Yep, I'll just remind everybody where how we got here. Um, there was a lot that we talked through last time. I think Rochelle put it best that it was overwhelming. She felt like she needed some time to digest and understand and clarify. Um, talked to several of the city council that have come in to ask clarifying questions. We even had some information, um, that went back and forth on what sort of conceptual densities could happen if we did a different zoning option, which was something that was talked about in the last meeting, but we didn't have any sort of numbers to look at. And even those numbers are based on some assumptions of hillside development, things like that, which are, which are a little vague. But, um, I did send out something to Dallas and to the council, which we talked about, I mean, which everybody hopefully saw. Um, and other than that, we just have the items of the, of the annexation agreement, which I don't know, I don't know how the council wants to go about it, or the, or the chairman, the mayor, or if, if Dallas representing the developer wants to have any sort of input. We can go through them again one by one and vote on them. That was the intention last time, or, or what? There's, there's only a, a number of them that there may be some, um, probably some division on, from the council's perspective. Um, there's quite a few things that we need to kind of mesh together with, uh, the developer, um, some of which is just kind of making sure we're on the same page with the legal jargon, um, as, as the attorney that represents the developer kind of threw a different, um, take and spin on that. There was a bunch of red flags that came up from the city's perspective, which I don't think we necessarily need to hash out in the meeting unless it really is, we think this and they think that. But, that's where we're at, so I don't know how you wanna go about it, Mayor.
I think breaking it down, you know, like we were trying to do last meeting and just needed a little more time to prepare to do that. Um, I think that would be a good starting place, and then if we need to have discussion about items or there are other things that need to be considered, we can talk about those at that time. Does that work?
Yep, sounds good to me. Okay, I'm gonna bring up, once again, the document that I had up last time. Let me get it up, and we can talk.
Mayor, may I ask a question before we get started?
Sure.
I was just gonna ask Scott, how do you feel? Have you had time to kind of go through it?
Yes.
Cause last time you didn't, you were blindsided, so.
Wasn't really blindsided, but I was more concerned that it was nine thirty-seven at night and they were on item three at forty-nine, so. I would've been blinded by the camera.
Nobody take my hand.
Okay, um. We did talk through all these things. Um, again, a lot of these things, there's no material difference. The zoning was obviously a big one. Um, back to what we, we had was the original proposal, um, by the developer, and, um, it went through two iterations. The second one was, was, was forwarded on to city council, and that was the, that was the colored map, which I will get loaded, so we can talk about that. And of course, the other, the other option, um, was option two. I don't know if it, if we really were gonna look at that much, but then what, the, the idea that came out of the last meeting was we just hard zone this, one acre and two acre, I mean, R one and R two in different areas. Um, I'm just curious, Dallas, if you had a chance to talk to Alex and, and think what your view is? Are you open to that at all? Would, would you rather stick to this? I don't have any idea how the council feels about it, but that's really where our conversation is. And I can go into any of the stuff that I sent out to answer any sort of questions. Essentially, it's, it's restriction of density, trying to keep to a specific, not trying, but very calculatedly keep to a specific number versus just zone it and simplify everything.
So I did, I have talked with Alex about this. Um, so we, we did have some back and forth with Dan as far as what the Rural Done Right impacts would be, and I think just to kind of summarize, the R one zone looks like it's still gonna be the ten thousand square foot. Um, the R two zone is gonna be ten thousand square foot with two units, or a single family with seventy-five hundred square feet. And then, we also were asking about, um, if there was like an R three one component, which would be single family. Um, but in talking with Alex and previous projects that him and I have done together, um, when we get into those smaller, I think the R three, um, that's proposed for the Rural Done Right for single family is down to sixty-five hundred square feet.
Six.
Six thousand square feet. Um, and with, with Alex's, Alex's experience, going to lots that small are more challenging to put houses on with setbacks and everything. And so, um, I think we're, we're, we're definitely open to the hard zoning, or basically just turning the whole map one color except for yellow and purple, taking those to R two. Um, I think the, I think the main thing from our perspective that came out of last meeting was, um, and if you could just refresh my memory, Dan, but I, I, we had added something to the document as far as whether there was impact fee or reimbursement. And I think that the way the city's set up now currently, there's collected impact fees, but there's not necessarily a reimbursement component for any of the waters, roads, sewers.
So our cur, we, we don't have any road impact fees, is what, is what I said. Um, we haven't, all of our impact fees actually go to make a, a single payment, so we don't have any really option for reimbursement.
Okay.
Um, with the exception of our parks' impact fee.
Okay.
Um, and, and that would be reimbursement of development of, you know, you know, utility level or, you know, s- upsizing from what the subdivision requires to what the city is saying that they want, or something like that. But, we don't have anything in our, in our code that regulates how that is done or anything like that, so.
So I think from, so the way that we kind of arrived at this map originally was we looked at the flume, we looked at the R one, we made some assumptions for losses and said, hey, we kind of wanna try to redistribute these so we don't end up with one type of R one through the whole project. Um, and in, when there are, um, impact fee reimbursement type things, uh, on roads, for instance, uh, in other cities, your developer would be required on a hundred-foot wide right-of-way to put in fifty-five-foot equivalent road. The city would pay for the additional asphalt, uh, the additional sidewalk, whatever else is in those sections to build it out to the four hundred. And so I, I think one of the main takeaways from, um, what we had proposed here, which was, hey, if we look at this whole proj, uh, this project as a whole based on the flume, and we try to just target what would be a reasonable expectation for R one, but then we kind of reconfigured into some higher, medium, and lower density options, um, this is kind of what we arrived at. Um, from the, from what's in the document now with, um, some of the off-site improvements as far as master plan roads, specifically probably City View Drive, um, and some of those others, is there's a lot of infrastructure costs associated with those. And so, depending on what council's appetite is for what they would like to see built with this project, and then trying to cap density versus go unrestricted on density within those zones, I, I think it's trying to find a balance of saying, hey, we're asking for a lot of things that are going to cost the developer a lot of money, but i- is it fair, or how do we balance that out as far as capping the density? And so, um, so I think we're open to the R two. Um, Dan had sent me an email that had kind of a tabulation of these areas, um, if there was an unrestricted, uh, if there was an unrestricted density on them. Um, but he kind of looked at the blue portion as being the steeper part, where there is gonna be some hillside, um, there could be some hillside restrictions depending on what the topography is. And then I came back and said, hey, if we're doing no restrictions, then, and I, so I kind of misinterpreted the way it was, but I went in and revised it, so he has a number of five, six, seven. I went in there and just took the divide by half for hillside out, and that put our total number on just a straight gross acreage divided by ten thousand square foot lots, assuming a twenty-five percent loss, and that bumped it up to the six hundred and thirty-six. That's still probably on the high end. It's probably considerably on the high end, taking into account the hillside. Um, but looking at the, the differences in those numbers of getting up to that six hundred and something, I think that's maybe a give and take negotiation part with the city as far as to what extent of off-sites without some kind of upsized reimbursement on roads, and, and how we try to kind of balance that out between the two.
Can I talk for just a second about, about the roads, and specifically City View Drive? Um, one of the, here, I'm gonna try to bring up a better map so we can zoom in. It takes a minute on my computer to bring up Google Earth, so I'm gonna start Google Earth, but we'll, we'll use Google Maps until Google Earth gets wor- warmed up. Um, so this is, this is kind of the space that we occupy, having not had a, a traffic impact study yet. Um, and from the start, one of the reasons why we wanted to have a, have a development agreement as a part of this annexation agreement was, um, there are some things that aren't spelled out super well in our code, and, um, we wanted to make sure that what was the plan was, was something that we could live with while there was still leverage at the annexation part. City View Drive, for example, we don't have anything in our code that says how many methods of ingress egress is needed, depending on the size of a subdivision. And if a subdivision is built out in phases, at what phase are you gonna say to any particular subdivision, you gotta have more roads? And so, as we've looked at roads, this has been probably one of the biggest divi- dividing issues. I think it's one of the issues that has gotten certainly the residents in the area on the east side of town worried and concerned. I know I've had a lot of reach out from these, from these residents, um, worried about too much, um, um, I guess compaction of any, of den, of, of traffic on any one road, and, and the, the negative impact of, of that traffic in any one area, and, and how is that fair? And, and to them and all of that. And then, we have the issue where on our master plan, we have four hundred north and we have three hundred north that go through. Yet we have a property owner who has no, um, desire to build those roads or to even allow easement for those roads to go in, should the developer wanna build them at this point and acquire easement. So at least for the short term, and whether that short term is five years or thirty years, those roads are probably not gonna go through. We know two hundred north is already in. We've recently added one hundred north to our transportation master plan, but it is not constructed, and it has to work with the county, leaving the only other real, true viable, um, road being City View Drive. And not only that, there's no other development that will happen to cause City View Drive to be built, which underlies my main concern about City View Drive. Um, this is a major, well, I can't remember the exact designation, major minor collector on our transportation master plan, but it is a big, important part of the city's, um, transportation master plan.
I think it's a minor arterial.
Minor arterial, we'll look right here on the map. So, again, back to my concern. It is a, it is a ma, oh, it is a major.
Collector.
Collector. Proposed major collector af- after everything was finally said and done. The development that happens here is really the only opportunity to have this road built by develop, development mitigating its own impact. And one of the bigger concerns about the development agreement as countered by the developer's attorney was that, um, any, like one, I think the way it was written is one access would be sufficient up to eighty homes. The eighty-first home would require a second access. Um, well, three hundred or four hundred, I've already said, probably aren't gonna go through anytime in the near future at all. Um, one hundred north, working with the county, um, could potentially go through. Um, we've, we've had a lot to say to the county. They're doing their master plan. We're really hoping that they work with developer and with the city to get that put in. The challenge is, is let's say we were to just sign off on the, the developer's, um, version of the development agreement, and two hundred and one hundred are put in. Um, how does City View Drive ever get built? It's gonna be, have to be the city finding grant money, the city working with the county to try to get that built. Um, one of the other aspects of specifically City View Drive that was in the, the developer's, um, attorney's version of the grant is that City View Drive shouldn't have to be improved, fully improved, meaning full width, full curb gutter and sidewalk all the way out. And, and that, and agree, admittedly speaking, that is a lot of improvements, very expensive. Um, so I think that we can talk about, I mean, we can negotiate and whatever the council and the, and the developer wanna get to, but again, my concern is, is if we don't require City View Drive to get built, it may not get built anytime soon until the city and county figure out how to go about it. Two, um, when it gets built, one of the current problems that we have during the fair time, and this, this isn't really the developer's problem, this is more the county's problem, if anything, and the city's problem since it's our infrastructure, is we get a lot of traffic, we get a lot of cars parked, and we get a lot of citizens that are parking and walking into the fairgrounds, and it's literally a hazard as they try to walk. There's a nice sidewalk section right here by the Kemp's house, and then you get into this vague, what is the road, what isn't the road? And you got citizens walking, people coming around this blind, blind turn, pulling horse trailers, and it is literally a, 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 a problem for, um, safety of pedestrians. And there's really no designated way to walk until you get down to this point where you get into some sidewalk, which was built with the, with this phase of the GUR subdivision. So, the question is, is, um, what do we, what do we wanna prioritize? And, and, and in having this built and improved to what level? Is it curb gutter and sidewalk, full width, all the way in? Knowing that the amount of impact that that is? Um, are we comfortable in saying, yes, one access is fine up to so many houses, and at that point you need a second one? I mean, this is, this is a major division of kind of the approach. Personally, I think that one hundred north will get built, um, at some point. Um, I think that the, that the, Alex has a lot to offer the county in terms of helping them improve their section here, and for, with some trade there, the fact that the county has its own road department, the fact that the city could assist. I really think that that could be a three-way, um, partnership to get one hundred north built. Of course, keep in mind during the fair itself and major events, the, the only way the county is gonna agree to that is if they can gate it off, so that they can control ingress and egress from the fairgrounds as its entirety. It would only act, work as a completely fully functioning street when they open the gates, when they're not doing an event. But that's, you know, that's, that's probably okay. I just, I really think that City View Drive is one of these things that we've, we've just gotta make sure we, we're comfortable with the outcome, um, because it's kind of a major thing. Now, having said all of that, without a traffic impact study, and me not being a traffic engineer, but understanding human, um, what?
Behavior.
Behavior. I don't know how many citizens that live in this area are gonna drive all the way out on City View Drive to then turn around and drive back down Center Street to go to the high school or to go to downtown. Some of them that live in this area very well may drive this way and then drive out on two hundred south to go out, cause a, a good chunk of people who live here, you know, commute to sit or to work. Um, how many of these people will actually use City View Drive if it gets built? I don't know, and we can only guess at that without the traffic impact study. I think the bulk of the traffic that is parents taking their kids to school are gonna come down one hundred, they're gonna come down two hundred to try to get to drop kids off at the elementary, to try to drop kids off at high school, high school kids going there, and so forth and so on. Um, one thing that a lot of people have said, why don't you, why don't you make them build a road out north to one forty-three, no, sorry, to, what is it, two fifty-seven?
Two seventy-three.
Two seventy-three, because nobody is gonna drive all the way out north and...
And then go all the way back in.
And then go all the way back in, unless really that's the quickest way to get to the freeway in the future as things kind of evolve and where that north exit, where that north corridor eventually comes out. Eventually, it, it may get utilized more. But right now, there's so many landowners between here and there, I don't think that that's really viable to talk about as a short-term solution. The other question is, is what is gonna be, how, how long are we gonna have a runway to have this thing fully built out? I think it's fair to say it's probably twenty years, give or take ten, depending on how well the lots sell and so forth like that. Um, so again, we don't have a traffic study, we need to come up with something that we agree to. I've already mentioned City View Drive and all of that. But we're talking zoning, I don't know how we, we went to that.
It was my fault.
I'll take, I'll take.
Yes, impact fees.
Oh, we were talking about impact fees for, for reimbursing for things like that, but.
In your concept, as you've been talking about this development, have you included developing that City View Drive? Has that been a big part of what you've been penciling in in your numbers as you calculate, you know, how this is gonna develop over time? Has that been a big part of the development cost?
Well, it, I, I don't know that I've necessarily ran like an engineer's estimate on the cost of that road. Um, and, and part of the reason why it's difficult to forecast is because the transportation master plan is a colored line on an aerial image, and how this actually gets through that first bend that Dan was talking about, it's pedestrian, and then there's an intersection that's shown there, and then how you get around, and how do we work with the county to have them dedicate right? There's just a lot, it's not point A to point B or a straight line. There's, it's hard for me to even tell what that's gonna look like from a traffic design standpoint, intersection, design, and, and all of that. So, we have it shown on there. I have kind of a, a dashed line of what it could look like, um, but without knowing what the county wants to see as far as an intersection. The other, the other issue with it is that where that intersection is shown, there's already that subdivision where it's platted, and so generally on these major collectors, they're longer streets with sweeping curves that don't have sharp turns, and so I don't know what that intersection would look like in intersection.
And the best thing I could say is that right now, all of the parties are, like, I agree, this is a, this one is, is gonna be a difficult one, but the county wants to solve it, the B L M is open to doing whatever they need to do, city needs to get it solved.
Well, that's what I was curious, couldn't this be a cooperative arrangement between the county and the B L M and the developer and the city?
Has to be.
Yeah, cause I mean, it benefits all of them.
No other way.
It benefits the city, I mean, the county and things, they need the help on this.
Well, and, and, and I mentioned the, some of the problems with pedestrians. This, this has been a, kind of a thorn in the side for the county operating the fair for a long time. Um, it's not optimal, you know, the B L M, we're grateful they did all that nice stuff for the trailhead, doesn't work. Nobody uses the parking. Um, they need, we need a better solution for the trailhead anyways.
Right.
It needs to be figured out. The county has been recently, um, they've done a lot of work with this property owner here. Um, in fact, one of the things, as I zoom in on it, on the, on the other, is the fence that goes around this area does not actually go around their property. The property line goes straight down here, and yet they fenced all the way out here. The county has been working with them, they've abandoned the, the old, um, road that used to go through here, which they have recorded as a easement, whatever. So they've done a lot of work with the property owners to square up that property. Um, this, this just needs design work done, and, and it's gonna probably, the county doesn't know either. Like, we're gonna need to actually, you know, I don't, I don't know, um, and it depends on what, the way it was written in our agreement is that the developer would, would design that, and I don't know if that's something that Dallas is capable of, or do you have to bring in a subcontractor to do an intersection design? But, it, we're, it's gonna take four parties sitting down and figuring it out, and it is a pain. I totally get that. My concern is, is if we don't solve it as a part of this thing, it'll stay that way and be a, be a problem for this, for, for this community that's gonna go in, not to mention to continue to be a thorn in the side for the city and the county. So that's why I said, I put it in the agreement. We've been talking about this from the start. I mean, this goes, the original version of this map goes way back to Cleve, and City View Drive was always part of this.
Well, and now you're bringing those individuals with those parcels into the city, they'll be annexed in, and so that's gonna impact them, and so there's a lot of factors here.
Yep.
A lot of different players.
So yep, it's, it's a hassle. So the question is, we leave, if we leave that in, are we gonna require full improved width, curb gutter sidewalk? My biggest concern on, on the, the curb gutter sidewalk, I've already, I've already detailed, it's right around that corner. The other factor is, this is on our active transportation plan. We do want some sort of a, a trail system that ties in, that comes around the, the, um, Valentine Peak and, and, and comes in so that you can go up the canyon. We're gonna have a trail system up the canyon. I gotta believe that people that are living in this, you know, a hundred and, what have you got, a hundred and sixty-seven acres, are gonna wanna be able to walk this road and walk up the canyon. I mean, we, we gotta plan for pedestrians and active transportation in this corridor. We do have a very narrow corridor to work with. Um, we only have, we certainly don't have the right-of-way that the, that the, that the, um, standard shows. Um, so it's gonna have to be a design that doesn't allow any parking on either side in order to get the lanes and, and, and turning stuff and all of that that's, that's required for our typical section. So, um, if we don't plan City View Drive and, and plan it right, then it's just gonna be left for the city to do at some point with what money, I don't know.
And I, I think part of our, our proposition was that, uh, like I said, in other, in, in other cities where there are impact fees and there is the reimbursement aspect of it, um, it would be, um, when we, when we're required to put in off-site improvements, which this would, what I, I would call off-site, so when you talk about master plans within a development, there's no question there. Everything within the developer's property, they develop fully to the city's standard, but once you get beyond the limits of what they own, you have to acquire the full right-of-way. But once you get beyond the limits of what they own, you have to acquire the full right-of-way. But generally, you would put in the asphalt, and that could be from the center line, could be twenty-six feet, could be twenty-eight feet. But generally, they will require you to put in, call it a twenty-eight foot, I think the minimum's twenty-six from a fire standpoint, but twenty-six feet of asphalt. And then you kind of grade the rest of the right-of-way out. And then, in theory, this is a poor example because there's a developed subdivision on the north side and there's a city property on the south side. Um, but the, the thought is that you put in the, the traveled way that you need to facilitate traffic. And then as others come through and develop up along it, they then build that out. Um, but in this case, that would-
Right.
-be unlikely, so.
Yeah, and I have the numbers on that if anyone wants to know. It's fifty-five-ish feet is what all this says with the twenty-five-foot dirt south side to where they're doing the cemetery fence, a five-foot curb and gutter on the north side with an asphalt surface of twenty-six feet. So that's what we're working with.
Existing?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to bring up the, so we know the actual, well, it, it, let's, we don't need to drill down in anymore on the, uh, typical section. But it, but it is, there's a specific width there that we have to work with, and we're going to have to, it's going to have to be designed to work as a, what do we say, major collector?
Major collector.
Major collector, um, and knowing that we, we want to have, and it may be that we just have a sidewalk on one side of the road.
Yeah.
And that's the way pedestrians are going to use that.
On the north side where it ties into that fairground.
Or it's a multi-use path.
Yeah.
Or something like-
And we have, we have no problem designing the road if we're improving City View Drive. It's, it's more so just about how do we bring the parties together and come up with an alignment? And, because there's pretty straightforward guidelines as far as curb radiuses and stopping side. So, that's, it's not a problem at all to design it. Um, it's just looking at a colored line on an aerial image and saying, what's this actually going to look like? Or it could be two very, very different things, so.
Yep. And I, and, and to answer that question, again, I think that the parties are ready to talk. So I think we can, I think the city would be happy to facilitate that and, and get it, get it done. It's just the question is, really what we're talking about is who's paying for what. So it looks like we have about seventy feet to work with.
And that was a concern where I kind of put the dashed lines on there is, I mean, the city's GIS is maybe right fifty percent of the time. But it looks like there's headstones on the, on the, on further to the east.
I think I remember actually pulling a tape and figuring we had more like sixty feet.
Yeah, I think it was sixty-two feet that day.
I don't think you're going to get into that cemetery without some issues.
Oh, yeah. We, we can't, we can't touch the cemetery. There's, there's a lot-
And the fence, and the actual permanent new north side fence is being completed now, so that's going to be permanent also.
So without pulling up the typical sections, which I could do, we're going to have to, we're going to have to be very creative and figure what that is. And it's going to be mostly, like, we're not going to have to have a turning lane or anything like that. It's just going to have to be able to convey the traffic and, and safely convey the pedestrians through the same space.
So I, I think if I'm reading between the lines, we're saying that the master plan says seventy-five-foot right-of-way. Very likely, we don't have seventy-five feet to work with. And so when you look at those typical sections and you see the lanes laid out and then a parking lane, we're probably talking about necking that down through portions of it. So you'd probably have seventy-five out at, um, at the connection point. But then as we continue east, we're kind of meandering along.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. But, again, the reason why this has always been part of the plan is what the reasons I've designated is if we don't solve this as a part of this, I'm, my fear is that it won't get done. Or it will get done very poorly, and we'll, we'll live to regret it.
And we need two roads going in there for construction, not one. We need two.
Well, so then we talk about ingress, egress. Um, and again, we don't have any guidance on that. I think generally speaking, two roads is always better than one. Um, I think Cedar City's code, which, we're not Cedar City, but just somebody that actually has this spelled out, says eighty. Um, it's important to note that there is an emergency egress down this gravel road by the county. In an emergency, if this road were to be blocked and, and something was on fire, fire trucks and, and police could come in through this back emergency egress or somebody could leave. Um, but I don't think we want to, um, I, I think that everybody would probably agree to only have one ingress, egress um, above a certain number of homes is, is a really bad idea, even if you have an emergency. Just because you're going to get consecrated traffic, which is going to have a lot of other negative impacts.
And I, I think that's part of the discussion as well as far as, um, providing that second access and then to what level of service we're constructing that road out. Because, um, whether we provided a gravel road to City View or a gra- or depending on how that works out, I mean, depending on where our, where our sewer lines end up being in relation to the first phase and where our lift station ends up and maintenance roads and tying into, um, just how we tie into those roads. I mean, there's, but I, I think that's kind of where we were coming from as far as to at least start the discussion of full, full improvements, asphalt, if we're doing partial, um, or, or how that, how that looks.
So back to, because roads ended up becoming the thing we were talking about, thanks to me going off the topic. Um, the way we had it originally in the, in our version of the agreement said, Two Hundred North, City View Drive fully built out. An option was, they would, they would add a third access after they get a certain number of homes on the very, probably on the top end. Um, they came back with Two Hundred No- North fully improved, a second access somewhere when eighty homes are built. That's kind of the, where we're at and where the developer's at. Personally, I don't know if I myself as hung up on a fully improved City View Drive the entire way. But I, I was really concerned with having a walkable, pedestrian, safe way for, for people to get out of, not only the fairgrounds, but to get out of the subdivision if they want to come and walk out to the park, walk up the canyon. People like to walk. And, and if we have a, if we have kind of already some tight areas with, with some traffic, that's why I was suggesting we, we have at least an improved road to some point, even if it's just one side. You know, we, we have a way for people to get out and, um, and walk.
Well, it seems to me we need to bring the county in because we've got to bring them in.
Oh, yeah, well, we have to, absolutely.
Oh, I know, but I mean, right now, and get the, in the planning stage.
Well, but we can agree what's going to go in there from a who's going to pay for it standpoint, which is what this development agreement really gets down to brass tacks. And then the implementation of it is, we sit down with-
But won't the county have to pay for some?
Um, for this development agreement? No.
Well, for the, I know, but I mean, they've got to help on the improvement of that road.
I would think that we could ask for something like that, and the county's going to say we're not the one developing-
On City View Drive and One Hundred North, we need to negotiate both.
Well, clearly, as they build out their, their fairgrounds, they're going to have to put in improvements. Like, if they came tomorrow and wanted to put their event center, that big barn right here, we would tell them, you may not have to get a building permit from us, but you have to follow our zoning code, including our general plan, including the transportation thing.
Right.
You have to put One Hundred North in, county. We could say that to them. Um, as far as this, that's already existing, what necessitates this changing is the development out here. I don't know if you could force the county to spend money in building that.
Well, there is a concern there right now, like you said, a safety concern.
And I think we could ask them for sure because of that very safety problem. It is a problem for the fair.
Yeah.
Well, one thing with the fair, we sat in a meeting with the, the fair people in Iron County where that big open, you know, where the entrance is, where they always have the carnival. They were talking about putting the carnival on the backside of that during the fair and using that whole big area for parking, because that just makes more sense.
Well, and I think-
But that's, you know, that-
To bring out another aspect of this, there's a fair amount of horse trading, to use a rural term, that's going to have to go on between Alex and the county. For the county to develop some of the eastern side of this, they're going to need to tie into the sewer system, including using, the use of the lift station and things like that. They're going to have to coordinate drainage. Storm drain does not drain from here, um, and if they're going to kind of build this, not to mention roads. Like, if, if, if Meisner's going to have to build roads for his thing, is the county going to build roads identical to it? For the horseman's entrance and all that stuff? Or do they, do they move that here? And, and, but on the flip side, there has to be equal easement acquisition for City View Drive by Alex of the county. And, um, how much can they work together on this to say, okay, we'll do this, you do that, we can both, Meisner can get the development built out, the county can get the infrastructure it needs to really fully optimize their fairgrounds. And they're in the middle of doing their master plan right now for the fairgrounds, and they've, they've already reached out in a good way with these guys. But I think there's going to have to be some cooperation, even from a money standpoint, between the two, even if it's just trading value. And maybe the county says, fine, we'll build City View Drive, you guys do X, Y, Z, and we'll trade some property and make it work. I don't know, but-
Dan, can we flip back to the transportation plan real quick? Because the, the other thing too that's difficult with this is just where does, so we've identified City View Drive through the cemetery portion as a challenge, coming around the bends is a challenge, but, um, but the other thing is that, again, these are just colored lines on an aerial image. Where does that actually fall on the north-south section of City View Drive? Is that a common line where it's half us, half county?
Right.
Is that all us, no county? And so-
The way it's drawn is through your property. The county, when we, and we had input from the county when we updated this.
They told you to push it?
No. What, what they said is, we don't want anything to do with that road. We want our own private road within our, at the time. And I, and this was different leadership. I, I don't want to call her out, but Marilyn was like, we don't want a public road. We want to have our own private road, and we don't, we don't actually want anything to do with what goes on out in the subdivision.
Yeah.
And so, we didn't push that road, but it was definitely understood from the county that they didn't want to have the public road there. But the, at that point, they were hard no on One Hundred. They were just like, city roads aren't going to have anything to do with, with the county fairgrounds. I think that there's a, there's been an evolution of thought from the county. I think that actually having a common road right down that property line makes a ton of sense. And they have a gate that they could open or close for One Hundred North right here. Like, like, I, as I've talked to them, I've said, you, you don't realize that One Hundred North and, and accessing City View Drive actually helps you far more than it's an existential threat. Because that, you're, you can meter people in for a big event, and when they're done, you can open the floodgates and get everybody out. Like, how else are you going to try to get circulation within the fairgrounds as it is? There's like all these, these bottlenecks and stuff. And I, and so I think they've realized, actually working with you, working with the city, that it helps them actually manage their thing better.
Yeah, I, I would agree for the main reason of it. I don't know if the city's ordinances are written this way, but a lot of times when you have major collectors, there's restrictions on driveways-
Access, yep.
-to it. And so to have it set somewhat into ours makes, makes it challenging. So whether it is, what, fifty-fifty, or we have to put it right on our property line and then in, I think that's, but a- again, that's where there's just so many, until we get to some kind of design level-
Right, and design level, I'm glad you said that, because it may make, I remember we got to the level when we were discussing this. It may make sense for you to have backyards that back up to the county property and have that main road go through as long as we allow driveways off that main road.
Yeah.
Um, that may be preferable to you and at a disadvantage to the county. Personally, I thought having a main road that gives you that much more separation from the carnival, which they're inevitably going to put there, is probably better. If I, if I owned property, I'd want to have some privacy in my backyard versus a carnival in my backyard. But that's me. So I think we can figure all that out. Really, the question is going to be the, the financial responsibility of building City View Drive. And at what point are we comfortable with some sort of a compromise on this that says you can have Two Hundred North fully built out for a certain number of homes, and then you build City View Drive?
So, a lot of times when we're pursuing second accesses, it's the, generally the path of least resistance as far as working with landowners and how we can make that happen. In this specific example, there's One Hundred North. I've never talked to Linda Smith, but I hear she has strong feelings. Uh, so it doesn't seem like those ones are going to work. There was talk about the emergency access gravel road on the north side that would be not Four Hundred, but Four Fifty or Five Hundred. There's City View Drive. Um, the threshold that we had put into the document was with Phase One, we would do Two Hundred North fully improved. Or I, I think we put it as, um, curb-to-curb improvement with the widening of the asphalt with Phase One. Um, at the eighty-first, at the platted eighty-first lot, whether that's in Phase One or Phase Four, whenever we turn in a subdivision application to the city with the eighty-first lot, we have to have construction plans with that phase to construct it. Um, and then I think we tagged the third, I can't remember if we did it for water at Two Fifty or if we tied a third access. I think we said, once we get two, we're done.
You did.
So, um, so all that to say is that we would plan on putting Two Hundred North in with the first phase. The second phase, what we had proposed was that, once we qualify our second access that has some kind of off-site component to provide that circulation, we're done as far as off-site roads. And then everything that falls within our project, we fully improve as shown on the city's master plan, which has the, kind of the sweep out and then however Four Hundred or Four Fifty goes through, and then City View, I think, goes north for a long ways, so.
I don't ever see Four Hundred going unless she's-
Three Hundred or Four Hundred.
Yeah, like-
Well, and I don't want to trot out send it, Linda, but Linda has said, while she's alive, she doesn't want those to go through.
Right.
And she owns the property. What will happen i- in the future property owner, who knows?
And, and that's really what it comes down to, is that it's shown on your master plan unless you guys change the master plan. As soon as someone comes within, in with any kind of development permit, that's when the city steps in and says, this is on our master plan, we require dedication and road improvements. So as long as Linda's alive and doesn't do the next phase of the subdivision, and there's no applications unless someone can work something out with her, then it stays that way. But as soon as someone proposes something, then that's when the city steps in and says, similar to the county with the barn and the One Hundred North.
Yeah. If Linda came in tomorrow and wanted to develop, would say those roads need to go through. But until that day happens, and according to her, that's not going to happen, so, yeah. And I think there's been, there was some misconceptions early on. People thought the city was, was going to go in and aggressively take that, throw it in a domain, or we were going to buy it on behalf of the developer. No, neither of those things is going to happen. If anything, it would just restrict what happens out here until they could figure it out or talk her into it. And so, we, we would just say how many roads you have to have to, to provide for sufficient circulation.
I don't see where, oh, excuse me, that One Hundred North has any opposition as far as property ownership because that's a contiguous line between the city and the county. And so as far as property acquisition, and it's on the master plan.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, I haven't heard it any dis- I, I keep hearing that you don't see where that would be an option, One Hundred North.
Well, we as the developer don't have any mechanism to force the county to give us right-of-way.
I understand that, but it-
So, but assuming they were on board with it, then, then-
But the properties are contiguous, so it isn't like you're having to acquire properties to put that through.
Dan, I, I, I'm worried about just having the one access going down Two Hundred. That, that road's going to be so busy, and you've got pickleball courts there, you've got the pump tracks there.
The baseball games, the soccer games.
Baseball, soccer, and you're going to have construction equipment going through there.
Go out there right now.
I know.
Right, and I, I think, I mean, again, the city- Right, and I, I think, I mean, again, the city's position has always be, has always been, you need to have two. I guess the question is, is are you comfortable with having only one up to a limited number of homes?
Well, and I've tried to be quiet because I live right there, but.
Right.
I watch the activity that Sharon's talking about. Right now, it's very congested at this very moment. And so, to shove construction or any more, you know, you know, demand on that road, as far as any more traffic, through a recreation complex, safety issue is an issue.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna see kids get hurt or accidents out there or anything, and it's gonna be a busy street.
Cause you've got a, a bike park on the other side now, so you've got, you know, there's gonna be crossing on that street between, you know, kids gaining access on both sides, and.
Well, and ag- and again, the, the point, what we're trying to do tonight is work through what the city, wha- wha- what the city council wants to see in this agreement.
I'll just put a toll on there.
There you go, that's, we could, we'd pay for some stuff that way. Um, so, I mean, I'd say, let's, if there's more discussion, let's have more discussion. If, if there isn't, you guys say, okay, this is what we wanna see, let's put it in. We get done, we're gonna send something over to, to, um, AGM and, and, and see what, if, if they can live with that or wanna suggest something else. We do, of course, have Dallas here to give us input and feedback. At the end of the day, we're not trying to negotiate everything in this meeting. However, there is one thing that, that you mentioned, um, I think that, that, I just wanna make sure that, um, you understand, we need to have a sidewalk fully through this area. I heard you say curb to curb. We need to have a sidewalk through here. One of my biggest concerns, where are you dealing with this, is another area of town where we have a bunch of people, kids that are walking down a, a busy road with no sidewalk on the side. We obviously don't have sidewalks everywhere in town, but where we have concentrated traffic, we try to get that covered. Because what happens with no sidewalk, they walk up on the road. And I know that's gonna be a concern here. So, um.
At least on the one side of the road.
At least on the one side. We, we said fully improved, including curb gutter and sidewalk, we didn't say sidewalk on both sides. Um, we actually do have a width problem here as well. It's not quite as bad, because this isn't a high, as highly designated as a, as a, as a collector road. But we do expect this road to need widening, curb gutter, and a, and at least a sidewalk on one side, so.
Is the, but the right of way is adequate, right?
Yeah. The right of way.
So, it's, it's just the, the asphalt widening, curb gutter and sidewalk, right?
Yeah. The, the right of way is adequate for what the road is designated.
Okay.
Just tighter and tight. And, and unfortunately, there's some trees that are gonna have to come out here on Mr. Burton's property, and he's aware of that.
My brother, not me.
Um, on this, on this south side of the property. Cause it's pretty tight when you drive through there, you're like, there can't be enough right of way here. But there, there's enough right of way.
Yeah.
It's just been encroached upon a little bit, so anyways.
And he is aware.
I just wanted to point that out. We do have, um, the, of course, curb gutter and sidewalk along the, um, the parking lot here. We have designed this drainage, this inlet, right here, to approximately be just inside the curb and gutter, and it's designed at a low point, so this will actually be the way that, um, this area's storm drain will drop into that, and it should tie right into that curb and gutter. When the county put it in, they eyeballed it. They didn't engineer it. Alex would love that. But we do have a master plan for, um, the, uh, pickleball courts and everything, and it has, it has an approved, um, sidewalk and curb and gutter, which ties into it down this interior road, which ties right into that sidewalk. But at least on the north side of the street, we're gonna need it. And if, I guess if the council wanted to put it in a requirement on both sides, I would almost rather say we have a requirement for a sidewalk on one side of two hundred and on one side of City View Drive. If we're gonna have any, any to give on a fully improved, that way there's a way for pedestrians to safely walk out of this whole section of town and to interact with the rest of the city. And of course, I want the council to realize, the very next place that everybody's gonna complain about
I know.
will be from center, from Main Street to three hundred. That's, that's our problem, I guess, is, you know, traffic will disperse once it hits three hundred east, again, without having a traffic study. Um, some of them are gonna head north, some south, and some continue due west, so. Anyways, um, is there, is there any more discussion, or can we put something down on roads?
Okay, so where you say City View Drive fully built, can we negotiate on like, at least the road and around the corner, with a sidewalk on one side?
Yeah, yeah, we can do whatever.
Instead of, what do you mean by fully built?
Fully built means that the, the width as designated in our master plan, curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides. That's the full and total.
And how far in?
That is to one forty-three and to three hundred east into their subdivision.
Into their subdivision. Cause I would like at least to see curb gutter sidewalk on the side where, um, it's coming out of their subdivision, up by the cemetery, like on that side of the road.
On the cemetery side?
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Unless you guys feel differently, I mean.
So if you do it on the cemetery side, you gotta cross.
Yeah.
Cause we have curb gutter and sidewalk on this side of that road.
So are you saying it would be better to put it on the other side?
I'm saying it'd be better to put it at least from this section.
Okay.
Right here, you have curb, you have curb gutter and sidewalk here, you have curb gutter and sidewalk here. And that's where traffic, that's where pedestrian traffic walks.
Okay. I was just thinking, because if they walked on the other side, and then they're going up the canyon, that would make more sense.
From the perspective of the subdivision, they're probably, it would make more sense to hang on this side of it right here. Um, and, and you could require that, and then say, hey, county, how about you help us fix this, and, and we figure that out between us and the county down the road, I don't know.
Whatever is gonna be beneficial. I mean, I don't know that I wanna require them to do both sides.
No.
We can say one side and.
No.
One side.
Do you know what I mean? At least one side, and if we wanna do around camps.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense, we already have those sidewalks that, and then down on the other end by the one forty-three, you tie into it again.
Tie, okay.
Yeah, cause it ties back in where they did this subdivision down here.
Yeah.
I mean, and that, that.
It was out of the subdivision, and it's there.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I would be fine with that. I was just thinking more of walking and then going up the canyon, but they could still walk on the other side and cross the street.
Yeah.
Like it's.
Where we will potentially have an intersection there, I think if the, if the city's intent is to have one side, at least one side sidewalk, then just put something in the revised that says one continu- one continuous path. Because I look at it coming out of the south side, down to the intersection on the south side of City View, but then if there's an interse- if there's a T-intersection up there, you could have some kind of crosswalk that gets it back on the north side.
Yep.
Because at the cemetery, it looks to me like we're holding the north line off, I think you called it the GUR subdivision, and working south, and the, the south line of City View is what's gonna meander based on the cemetery.
Yep.
So I think if we just had something in there that said, a continue, one, at least one sidewalk that's contiguous from forty-three to the development, and then we can put it on the south side and transition it and have pet ramps and.
But for the point of this div- agreement, we can say one side.
Okay.
Um, what about requiring the second one upon so many homes, or put them both in upfront?
I think you need to put them both in to start with.
I would agree with you, because.
The safety.
There's gonna be too much traffic on that road with all of that. How else are people gonna get in and out with machines?
And I, and I still think.
I just wanna know like your perspective.
Some way, somehow, the county's got the command of the.
Yeah, that's my thing. The county needs to pay for that side.
Yeah.
Well, see how that's.
It's a safety issue, and it's a, an ingress and egress issue for the fair and so forth, yeah.
Sounds good to me.
I think. Getting the county to do it, yeah.
Are you taking a developer preference and just bringing that over to the city preference option one, so that includes both of those?
No, cause they're, they're pretty significantly different. I mean, the developer's preference is still pretty different. I'm just gonna mark this one green. I modified it, I marked it green if that's what we decided.
So, I, I think depending on what we're talking about, at, at whi- at which point, um, because of the, I think the biggest challenge on our end as far as requiring two accesses from day one, is that no matter what level of service we do to City View Drive, in order to get, two hundred is there, two hundred we can start on. But to get a right of way, or temporary easement, or anything to City View Drive down through the county, even if it's just a gravel road that's a construction entrance or something, that's something that takes time, and then there's cost to whatever level of service we're gonna build that to.
Stayed at like forty homes or something, then, then that starts to get worked on.
Yeah, and so, just.
Yeah.
Not that it's the city's problem, it's the developer's problem, but when we started, when we start talking about what the phase one is gonna trigger, we're talking about developers gonna do whatever's in, in their first phase. They're gonna have to do the off-site, the off-site, um, two hundred north road improvements to full or one sidewalk or whatever it is. There's a lift station, there's a stormwater basin, and then there's everything that's included in their site, and then there's still parks and other things to talk about. But you're talking about a lot of capital to get one project off the ground without ta- to say, just at phase one, whether that's five homes or a hundred homes. Now, a hundred homes is giant, that's not gonna be, but I just say that for, as an example. So, we come in with a fifteen lot phase, and we've gotta do whatever the two hundred length is, plus, I'm just trying to illustrate that there's the bottom and the upper front to.
Yeah.
But I'm also looking at the safety of, the safe, the safety aspect of it, because we have a lot of kids that, that are in that area as well. If we have one access that you're coming and going, how are we gonna, how are we gonna ensure the safety of our kids?
So, ma- maybe the difference, because safety usually comes from, from traffic, lots of traffic.
Right.
So is there a number that is more palatable? Is it forty homes?
Well, and then how, and I'm thinking of construction.
More palatable for only one road.
Is there any way to negotiate maybe some right of way or some use for construction, like on up to City View Drive or through one hundred north, to take that safety issue?
Have them come up and down that.
Yeah, access those areas, cause there's some kind of agreement on those, the use of those.
Just because I'm just looking at too, like, where the school right now is building, that big multipurpose building, that was a huge thing as far as safety.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of traffic that comes and goes, and the city took a lot of brunt, you know, for that, from that, and I heard a lot from that. So, I don't want citizens saying, well, we just shoved all of this traffic down this one ingress and egress while you're building the homes. There's still sports going on, there's still, it's still a lively area. So I just wanna make sure that we're thinking also, just the safety aspect of it too. I don't want.
Some of those other points.
What if you said a fully improved two hundred north and a partially improved City View Drive up to forty homes, and then after that, a, a fully improved City View Drive? And then there could be like a gravel entrance or something like that, call it a construction entrance.
But for construction, I think maybe like Rochelle's concerned, is that maybe that one down by the gravel pit, and maybe some of these others could just be designated as some construction ass- access, you know, to take that pressure off from the.
And I don't think we could force.
Yeah, you're gonna have a hard time getting, uh, subs to follow that route.
And you're gonna get a lot of flack from, from Linda Smith subdivision right there, cause you're driving behind the houses.
Yep.
But I think to Dan's original point on City View Drive, even if we fully improve City View, City View Drive curb gutter sidewalk, as far as like construction traffic goes, I don't know that the subs are, I mean, we could put notes on it. I, there's other communities that I've seen that have a second access, that they say, this is for all the constru- and everyone just goes path of least resistance.
Every time.
So.
But I don't want one way in and one way out, down that one road. I don't feel like it's safe, personally. That, that is me. I'm one of five. You know, I'm just voicing my concern.
So, I, I guess the, from the, we don't have, we don't have lot layouts, we don't have a design, we don't have anything, but from a back-of-the-envelope type calculation that I've talked about with Alex, for the lift station improvements and everything, I think that we're gonna be exceeding that forty lot number in the first phase. And so, that's my hesitation. So if we, if we trigger it at forty, then our phase is probably growing bigger to offset whatever secondary access. And so, I felt like we based it off the Cedar City eighty, but I think that our first phase would definitely be under eighty. I think it's probably the second or third phase that we would hit eighty. Um, but I, I don't, from a traffic modeling standpoint, I, I don't, I don't know what to tell you as far as traffic safety outside of saying. We put in the road based on what the city spec is, the sidewalks are there.
So let me ask a, a question that, and I'm not giving you crap, but that you dodged when this was brought up months ago. Cause you, cause you were not at design stage yet, I get that. Wh- where are you gonna start? You gonna start up at the top? Because City View Drive may be a lot more used if you start up at the top versus if you start at the bottom.
That was gonna be.
Be used at all.
That was gonna be my next question.
That path of least resistance, if you start developing from the bottom out, you know what I'm saying? Have you had any more thought on that?
Um, well, I think, I think based on the way that we structured this and saying that two hundred north was going in with the first phase, I would assume that we're closest to two hundred north, and then we would start probably, probably close to those ball fields, whether it's east or northeast, so somewhere in that region. Um, and then we would look at doing onsite, offsite, meaning on our site but not in our phase one of the lift station, and start building detention bay, or retention bay or stormwater basins at the low point. Um, but I would think that we would stay closest from our access and then work.
Work out.
Work out.
Work out from there. Again, because of the constraints of the site, which aren't necessarily the city, but lift stations are generally very expensive. The further we push it from two hundred north, there's more roadway we're paying to get two hundred north, even though it's money well spent, cause it's on our site. Um, and then with the master plan road, that's the City View Drive north-south portion, I, it just is a, it's kind of a balancing act of.
Yeah, I mean, you start in, then you work your way out.
That makes sense. I just wasn't sure if you were gonna start up here. Um, I'm, I'm sure, and, and we gotta finish with the roads before we go back to zoning, but the zoning is probably part of it. You probably wanna have a mix of different lots. If you, if you are gonna offer half acres, and you're gonna offer duplex or twin homes and some of that, you're probably gonna wanna have a fair amount of that, so you can kind of show what the, what the subdivision can be and stuff, right? Or am I right?
And partially, that's why we don't have lot layouts and things yet, because we don't know what we're designing to.
Sure.
So.
Yep, no, I get that. And I, and I wasn't giving you crap in that sense about not having that answer, but the discussion about City View Drive obviously makes a lot of sense, or doesn't, depending on where you're gonna build. And.
From a visuali- from a visualization perspective, I'm just going back to a few weekends ago, I went to a track meet at Dixie, um, well, whatever it's called. I think it was Dixie High School. Anyway, there was a very busy road that ran in front of the high school and a lot of traffic. But the sidewalks were really nice, and, I mean, everyone was going back and forth and doing their thing, it was a busy event. And I think in our minds, we just see the kids walking down the street, and we see the kids on their bikes, we don't see it with a sidewalk. So we have to kind of shift that visualization, because like, if that sidewalk hadn't been there, I'd be like, this is a crazy place, like, this is really dangerous. But with that sidewalk, it was like, that's cars, that's pedestrians.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think that's important to keep in mind, because what a sixty-six foot wide road section looks like built out compared to what is there today, is gonna be very, very different. I mean, you're talking about having a sixty-six foot road easily accommodates two travel lanes, parking, and then, I don't know if you guys have a four or five foot sidewalk, but I, but there's.
Varies on the, on the road designation.
Yeah.
Dan, is there sixty-six feet on two hundred north?
I can't remember, seems like there might only be sixty. I think it was only sixty.
Yeah.
But that, but that doesn't impact the sidewalk width, that just impacts your.
Yep.
Asphalt width, so, but to go from having whatever it is today, twenty-four, twenty-six feet asphalt. To forty-ish and then having a two and a half curb and gutter and four feet either side or five feet either side. I mean, you're talking about, i- it's gonna look a lot different, a lot wider, a lot more space than having twenty-six feet. And kids walking right off the edge asphalt. And that's generally when you look at communities that have the roads more built out fully. That's what you're kind of accustomed to seeing, it's just different for, for here where there hasn't been that standard historically.
And I guess that's where my mind is.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just picturing them all walking down there on, and riding their bikes and.
Well, I mean, you look, you look at Main Street, how much traffic do we have on Main Street and we have sidewalks and we don't even think twice about it. The problem is when you're crossing. Main Street, right.
When you look at this picture, if you're gonna be working on your, your retention and your lift stations and things down on that north side. And that northeast side, that lends itself to that access for construction along that gravel pit. To take the pressure off two hundred north for construction, I mean, if you're down in that area.
Yeah, I think, I think there's two different aspects of construction that we're talking about. And one would be the actual subdivision construction itself, which is mobilizing in and then the equipment is by and large there. And I have you, you have the operators traveling in and out, but I think the construction traffic you're more so talking about is home building.
No, I'm thinking of both because you could divert some of that on, down there as far as the initial development. You know, of your, your lift stations, your retention.
Yeah.
Things, I think you could control that a little bit as far as maybe their access.
Is that a dedicated road behind the houses there by the pit?
It is not, it is a road by use only.
Is that on Linda Smith's property?
No.
It is not, it is on county property. Mostly.
So if you're gonna look from a safety perspective, then you need to look at that versus down that, uh, recreation complex. I mean, pe- running in somebody's backyard isn't the same as running through a recreation complex.
My thought is. And I know nothing, it's just my thought. We will be taken to court driving dirt trucks behind those houses.
Why?
No, it's a road by use.
Why?
Yeah, I don't.
It won't matter.
No, I, th- they, th- you can drive it right now today and you can ride a lot of people back there and it's annoying.
It's a horrible road.
I think that if we were to designate that as a, as a fully improved road and improve it, you might get some complaints. But th- they don't, they don't own it.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're looking at the safety aspect and you're looking at the kids, like I've heard from people here. Versus the inconvenience to somebody driving down somebody's backyard, I, I don't think that's a choice.
Well, all the developer can do is ask them to go there, whether they will or not.
Oh, no, Dave, I'm talking about the initial de- development of the, of the, uh, whatever. They have a little more control over that than the, it's some, when they're building, you know, and the subs and all that kinda stuff.
So we're right back to where we are, now we've talked about it some more. Do you feel comfortable with, with a partially built, you wanna demand of both? Knowing that that's gonna be, um, a, a, a tricky thing, the way, not tricky, financially, um, difficult thing. At least until some future phases, um, or are we comfortable with two hundred north fully improved? To some number of houses? Just trying to keep the conversation.
When we say fully improved, you're still talking with sidewalk on one side, aren't you?
Yep, yep, that's the way I have it written right now. Curb gutter on both sides, sidewalk on one. The other advantage of sidewalk on one side, both of these roads are designated on our Trails Master Plan. We very well might put a, a, a multi-use trail with a grant on the other side. We're, we're applying, we're trying to get that, so.
Nobody's speaking. I mean, I can.
Nobody wants to make.
With the road developed and the widths we're talking about and the, looking around at other things we see, we're just not used to seeing this like that there. And because we've taken our kids to sports all these years and we know what the kids do and what it looks like, I think we're stuck on how dangerous that is. But I think when you create that buffer and that width and that designated sidewalk, the kids are gonna be on the sidewalk.
I still say two roads.
Upfront.
Pardon me?
Upfront. Fully improved.
I'm good with the one. Fully improved two hundred, it's gonna look better, it'll look safer. People are not gonna go down by the cemetery and work their way out of there, whether they do it now and later, they're just not gonna do it. So, we, you know, path of least resistance is what they're gonna take and that will be two hundred. And until the county starts kicking in, does one hundred, that'll help some. And I think the county needs to kick in and help get their fair share going up to their fairgrounds.
I think there's a good chance the, the south side of this subdivision will use it eventually because it's two hundred north right through. Probably the path of least resistance for.
For just that south side, yeah.
When that gets built out.
Right. That's why I don't see the point in doing, asking for that right now.
So, do, so.
So what, what.
Sharon says both of them, at what point would you say you'd need to do the second one?
I know it depends on how he chooses to do the development, do the phases and, and when he's.
Well, how many houses though?
I don't know, like until we see some form of design too, how he's gonna do it, where he's gonna move it.
So you're saying the road access is a little bit.
Cause if he starts coming out and he starts going north. They're not gonna turn and come back to therapy, you know, to whatever we call that scenic view drive.
The problem is if you don't put a number in there, then it's vague and our subdivision doesn't, isn't gonna reco- require it. Now we just don't know.
He has eighty homes.
So is this where like say a traffic survey is going to help out?
We could say, we could say it's, um, in fact, one of the things written in the developer's version of the agreement, it says that we will. Adjust this based on the results of the traffic impact study.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so we're kinda gonna need to see some of that to totally nail that down, like we can guess what we wanna do.
But that's assuming we're requiring the traffic impact.
I mean, and they propose that.
But I, from the traffic impact fee study, I think that that's looking at a.
Not fee.
Uh, uh, yeah, sorry, traffic impact study.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, is that when, at least in my mind, when I say traffic impact study. Um, I think we're looking at what that means with the project as a master plan built out. It's not a, this is our first phase, second phase, third.
Totally.
Fourth phase, fifth phase. And so that's where I, I, I know the council had requested that and that's why we put it back in here to say, hey, from our previous meeting. We'll do the power and traffic when we come in with our first phase, but with the city having already done a traffic, transportation master plan. Fairly recently and then we're gonna just kind of more clearly define that with the number of homes and lots. I don't see that changing and so if City View's shown on there and a hundred's shown on there and two hundred's on there. And some variation of three fifty, four hundred, four fifties on there, I don't know that the results of that are gonna come back and show anything. Different than what the master plan says and I, I think that the most likely recommendations that would come from that would be. Hey, a sixty-six foot road's not appropriate, it's a seventy-five or something like that. I don't think it's gonna necessarily say your thirty-first house and your three hundred and fifteenth house and. So I, that's where I think that defining the threshold and that's where we kinda hung it on the same as Cedar City. I don't think the impacts of that study unless there was something, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but. I, I think of that as being a holistic overview of the master plan and analyzing it based on what the city currently has. Which is a difference of your flume says this, someone's actually proposing this. Do the roads as projected from the flume match the full build out of the project itself? And are the roads adequate from a master plan with section standpoint?
Did the traffic master plan taking account this building out?
Yeah.
But they do that based upon the general plan, so whatever the, throughout the whole city, they'll look at the general plan and they'll say. Hey, we think that there's, the city shows this is R three, so we load this area with R three tri-. R three type traffic volumes and this is medium density and we load it with this and then we run an overall model. And see what the daily trips look like and then based on whatever level of service the city's planning on offering. They then say, okay, that equates to a fifty foot, sixty-six, seventy-five.
And not just for this area, but for the entire built out within the annexation, the general plan.
Okay, so it wa- the flume was R one, so the traffic study was based on R one density?
Yep, and we're, and we're flirting with R one density.
Right.
So, um, but I'm saying it also, it plans on a full built out, like the full belt, belt loop, if you wanna call it that. All the connections and all of that stuff and all you can do is build what you're, what's currently being developed as you go, but that's what it's tied to.
Okay.
But the, the point generally of a, of the secondary access is more from an emergency vehicle standpoint. Not from a pedestrian, traffic, it's a redundancy secondary access. Generally, the roads as they're designed in city specs, no matter what size are, are assumed to be safe for pedestrian traffic. So to the mayor's point, when it's built out, it's gonna look vastly different than it does today and I think. Be fairly common to what you're used to seeing other places.
So can I throw out?
Yeah.
An idea, and I've heard, and I'm not trying to s- sway the council, I just, Dave was saying, d- d- Councilman Harris was saying, um, he was comfortable. With one of them built out and I said, what about number of homes? Eighty homes is what's in Cedar's plan, eighty homes is what they, is eighty homes you're comfortable with that? For your recommendation, for, for the second, for City View to be built?
I don't know if it's eighty too many for basically one road, is what we're after.
Say again?
Instead of what we're after is eighty too many for one road, basically.
That's what we're saying.
So, I, I don't know. It is a lot for that one road.
Mm-hmm. Like eighty or more cars, eighty or more cars?
No, it's eighty homes, eighty.
I know, but it, eighty homes, just say they all have one vehicle, eighty.
Yeah, they're not one.
Eighty cars.
No.
Well, but that's when you need a traffic study because how much traffic does it add at any given time, peak traffic and hours and all that. John, you haven't said much?
I'm trying to be good, no, um, um, and I can understand you. Um, the comments on, on, uh, you know, car, and number of cars and stuff. But, um, those townhomes by my house, um, those new ones, let me get my little calculator out. They have, uh, four.
Twenty-four units?
Twenty-four, they have four cars per unit. They have a double car garage and then right outside, they have their driveway, so that little, little tiny place is ninety-six cars. So, uh, what I'm saying is, you know, eighty homes, a hundred and twenty.
Why I don't want townhomes?
And that's a small, that's just one entrance and one exit, it's, you know, it's not like two lane type thing. So, I'm just saying, you know, eighty homes and that's probably in the third, second or third phase would be eighty homes. So I'm just saying, you know, those phases are gonna be once again. I, I mean, I can't say one year, two years, three years, but those eighty homes are gonna be brought up. And it's gonna be on that, it sounds like it's gonna be on that section of property, you know, it's not gonna be down by the fairgrounds.
Maybe, what if they sell bigger lots down on the other end?
Well, if they sell.
I don't know.
Then they, that'd be part of, they have to come back to us. The developer or the builder would have to come back to us, is that true?
No, it's, it's as you permit the homes of a phase.
Okay.
It's not when the home gets built, it's when you permit the lots in the phase. So when you permit the eighty-first lot.
Okay.
Then you would trigger it, yeah.
Okay, and so the, so there, there's a difference there in the sense that when we plat the, so when we get the map approved through the city. We would get the eightieth lot approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But to when that's built out and someone's actually living in it is.
Right.
Right.
Is another however long that takes.
There's gonna be a lot of lots that are purchased and.
Isn't that what we call the subdivision approval? When that happens, then that triggers it.
Yep. So the, the, the only thing we have to work off of is what Cedar City recommends and it's based on some, something. I would think that it's based on some good best practices and. A traffic impact study which may or may not have gone into that, one of the things we requested for the traffic impact study was to talk about the number of, you know, ingress, egress. Um, the concentration of traffic down two hundred, we really kinda wanted them to look at that. We don't have that, we, we wanted to just see if we could negotiate to something that we could live with. With a bunch of us that are not traffic engineers, um, and we can kind of our guts know that two hundred north, once it gets too congested is a problem. And at what point do we wanna require more than that to be built? And, and, and i- is it phasely done, does that, is everybody comfortable with that or, or asking for a bunch upfront? And not, not as a threat, not to raise a specter, but if they, if we don't come to some agreement, they don't annex, they build in the county. The county's gonna look at minimums, we are at that point asking the county, will you please make them build more roads? And the county's gonna say what's required from a safety standpoint, from, from emergency vehicle ingress and egress. We may not get a second access for a long time, I don't know, so, so just trying to find it's something that kinda works. And, and, and what do we require and what's reasonable and, and so forth, so.
Well, and it doesn't prevent that in the interim, the negotiation to try with the county and whatever to work on some of these.
That's what I was gonna say, could we say contingent upon negotiation and partnering with the county for the development of City View Drive? Because the other thing I started thinking about is path of least resistance, if I know there's all that chaos going around the Valentine Pete Sports Complex. I'm gonna go around it to City View Drive to get out of there, I mean, I'm just gonna get used to kind of what's going on at different times of the day. Just like we do when we go around things, I mean, I do it around the school, I don't ever go near the school when it's co- it's there, it's going in or letting out, I just go around.
Well, that trailhead will be moved, it has to.
So could it be, could it be something like that because we know there's gonna have to be cooperation to get that second ingress, egress developed? And I know it's on the county's radar to do that.
And that makes a lot of sense if we say we're only gonna limit, we're only gonna allow eighty homes to be, eighty ho- eighty lots to be permitted. That gives incentive for the developer to work with the county and city to get that figured out.
Yeah, and I think that's the, that's the intent of us putting it in there, that's the threshold that then forces our hand to say. We can start talking with them tomorrow, but as we approach that eighty-one number. We gotta start getting serious as far as getting right of ways and that kinda thing, so I think that's. Whether, instead of putting contingent in there, I think by putting some threshold, we're suggesting eighty. That forces our hand at that eighty-first lot to have acquired something one way or another.
So I think I would be comfortable with like what you guys are recommending, but not a second access somewhere, I would say. City View Drive.
Say, instead of a second access somewhere, we say City View Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Is what you're saying, right?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
I'm gonna change this from homes to lots because that's what it really is.
And I wouldn't say eighty plus, I would just be.
Well, it's the eighty-first home. A lot, sorry, jeez, I just said that.
It's okay.
Is there consensus with that? Is there consensus with that?
That's just my, that's my thought.
So where does the incentive come in to negotiate with the county?
The incentive is, is that they can only build, they can only get eighty lots permitted. And knowing that it's gonna be some work, we gotta start working on it now.
And they have to.
But is that just restricted to the City View Drive?
The way it's written now, yeah.
I think there should be something put in there about one hundred north, too.
I think that's why it was somewhere, 'cause if it was one hundred north, that would be a second option. So it's a decision between is it specifically City View Drive or is it one of the two?
Yep, and that gets us right back to where I was, where we started with. If we get one hundred and two hundred in.
Then we'll never.
There's no requirement to ever put City View Drive in, which we then have to solve.
Yeah, I like.
And maybe that's okay. I don't know. I've just, I just wanted to point that out.
I, I, I get it and I agree, because I'd see the priority of City View Drive, but I just don't want one hundred north.
So you could say this right here, and then you could say, you could say a second one, eighty, and then you could say a third one at two hundred and fifty plus.
Yeah.
And then that's the incentive, 'cause the, the low hanging fruit is one hundred north.
Mm-hmm.
We, we need City View Drive to go in.
Okay.
The low hanging fruit is one hundred north.
One hundred north is gonna be the bonus, 'cause we're gonna get it, but we're putting this in the agreement. And is, can we do the greater than symbol, eighty? 'Cause eighty plus is a little confusing.
Yep. Dave, how do you feel about that?
Okay, so we're.
How about this?
I, I think on the one hundred north.
Okay.
As far as it being on a master plan, being through the county's property.
Yeah.
The city.
No, and, and I would say not say one hundred north, just say a third access.
But I, I guess where I was going with that is that assuming, if we were to assume that we had City View Drive built out to our property line and the city has one hundred north going from where it is today to through the county's parcel, the county comes through. That's where, between the city and the county, I haven't seen them, but if it was not the county and it was some other, they would say that's yours to put in with yours. Now, I don't know the relationship between the two and if the city can enforce, but, but that's where I'm to.
The only thing we know is the county's planning on developing that out and we're planning on having them put one hundred north in, or at least work with you on doing it. And we, we plan on helping. I mean, I think it's a, it's a three-way deal, but they're gonna need that in order for that to be put in.
Well, the property lines are contiguous and it's in the master transportation plan.
Well, and so where I was going with that is that if the city's going to propose to us that we're required to do two hundred north and do City View Drive. If City View Drive is put in.
Mm-hmm.
You're already gonna be bounded by City View on our property.
Right.
You're gonna have this one and then everything is county in between. So the county comes through, in my opinion, the county's.
It's their, their responsibility to put the third one in.
Connecting that.
Yeah, no, I don't, I, I don't disagree with you. I, I, and I think that we can, we can hold them to that and help, and, and, and even help them put it in.
Yeah.
When I say help them, I'm saying, um, not cash, but in kind.
Mm-hmm.
But I think the, the, the reason that we proposed it the way we did as far as two accesses and done, is because generally once you have two accesses, from a emergency vehicle standpoint, there isn't another requirement. What we're trying to avoid is the city saying, hey, we wanna have two hundred with phase one and City View and one hundred and four hundred for all off sites. And so that's where we're proposing too. If the city counters us and says, those two are specifically two hundred north and City View. And then we're done with our two and we obviously have to plan for everything that's within our parcel, that's acceptable. But I, I, that's where I'm trying to get to with you all.
I mean, you're thinking you take the third one out of there. I don't think one hundred's his problem.
Take it out, why?
That's not Meisner's problem. That's the county's problem. They need to put.
Oh, I, I get it. I'm just trying to see that it's still identified.
Yeah.
'Cause it's gonna be to their benefit, if it is done, it's gonna benefit the county, it's gonna benefit, you know, your subdivision and the city.
Which is great, but we shouldn't be putting it in an agreement telling Alex he's gotta do that third road. At any point to any homes.
Then they had to do it. No, we're trying to get it just identified, not saying it is required.
But it's in there right now. It's just three, one, two hundred and fifty plus homes there. I think that should be removed.
Where does it say that?
Fourth line, third line down. No, that's water connection.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
Well, well, you had said it. You, you didn't actually write it.
He just said.
I said it could be an option. The way it's written as we speak is two hundred north fully improved.
Yeah.
Sidewalk on one side at City View Drive, um, before the eighty-first lot. That's the way it's written right now.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I was saying, he, he said it, he didn't actually write it, so.
I know, I wanted to put sidewalk on one side.
The other thing is if we are able to, which we plan on pushing for the master active transportation plan, there are gonna be trail systems through this area as well. So we'll have people walking in on bikes on the trail system.
How about this?
Going through some of these properties.
How about this?
Underground property.
Okay.
Cooperate with the county on one hundred north.
Yeah. That's, we're not holding Meisner to anything. We're just trying to say that this is what's needed, is what'll benefit all parties.
And when I say cooperate, I mean just work with them to, to tie them all in. We're not saying.
To allow them to tie into the subdivision.
We're not saying financial requirement. We're saying cooperate with them on that, because they may wanna do some horse trading on easements and stuff like that. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and if that's, if, so if that's projected through to City View Drive and into our property, we would account for that.
Within your subdivision.
As a three-way intersection from City View into ours, and then it's the county's responsibility to tie into that intersection and take it through their property.
Through their property.
Yeah.
Yep. So that makes sense? Is that good?
Yeah.
All right.
There.
Hour and a half into that, let's go.
There's a, there's only a couple of these that are even really that sticky. I, and so most of them are not gonna take an hour and a half. Let's get back to zoning. This one may take a little bit of time.
Can we do this one?
Uh, we're doing the big one. Do you wanna do it last?
No, we're, no, no, I would. We're doing the big one first. It's the way to do it. No.
No. Do zoning.
Hey, let's, let's finish zoning. We talked about zoning, we got off on roads. I don't know what there is else to talk about zoning, other than, than, than what you're comfortable with. Um, I think that it sounds like, from what I'm hearing from Dallas, they'd probably be comfortable with either of those two options that we talked about.
Can we go back to the map, to the color map?
So are you okay with having, uh, R three into R two?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so if we remove the density restriction, remove the table, we turn the yellow and purple to one color, it's R two. Um, and then everything else on the site is R one with no density restrictions. We'll have to account for the hillside development. Where the slopes, where we get into those slopes topography wise. Um, but otherwise, it's R two, R one, and whatever that zone allows.
So when you say restrictions, it, you could go over five.
That means, no, that means you just can build what you can build in R one.
Oh, okay.
Build what you can build in R two.
And then you just limit it.
The restrictions are the zoning. They're not, 'cause this map, they're further restricting themselves. And this is just restricted to what the zones are.
Okay.
Does that civic area stay the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so that's obviously an item we're gonna talk about, but we, we intend on leaving that. So orange was just kind of earmarked, the orange, that'll be wherever it ends up design wise, but I think we'll end up with a two or three acre basin type thing. So, yellow and purple turn to one color, uh, and that's all R two.
Yellow, yeah, R two.
Um, everything else is R one, except for the red square that we'll earmark for the civic.
And then that, I guess it's orange in that northeast corner could change as far as design.
The shape of it, yeah.
As far as your retention on your.
Yeah.
Now, if we go this route, we're gonna need exactly where the zones are gonna go, 'cause we're actually just gonna incorporate it into our zoning map. We're not gonna have, um, a intensive, um, development agreement with all of the density, things like that. But we do need to actually zone it. And, and we could work with, with, with Dallas on, on the final version of that map, as long as the acreage is the same or something like that. Um, because I don't, I mean, again, we're, we're doing this ahead of design level. So one of the, one of the disadvantages of doing this zoning, straight across zoning approach is we actually have to color a zoning map something. Now, when you come to a subdivision stand, or subdivision, we already are gonna kind of work and play with that to some degree. You know, the line doesn't have to be exactly there. We're gonna kinda work with it, but we still do need to figure out where the zoning is gonna go and, and adopt it. We'll just adopt it right into our zoning map.
And I don't, I don't wanna go off on a long tangent on this, but I guess the, my question to council would be, we have acreages designated based on this, so if we take that L shape and call it R two, and I don't know what those acreages would end up, so it's twenty-two and sixteen, so it's about thirty-eight acres of R two. Does the, does the council want to see that as block zoned?
I'm gonna step, I, I know exactly where you're going with this. I'm gonna step out and say, I don't know exactly how the council feels, but I do know that per agreement with Linda Smith, we do need to keep this area as R one.
R one, yeah.
Yeah.
But as far as mix of R one and R two, if the acreage stays the same, we can talk about that.
Yeah, 'cause where I was going with that is that we could, we could say arbitrarily that council approves thirty-eight acres of R two in this project with some kind of restriction on the Linda Smith frontage and the remainder R one. Um, but where I was going with that is does council wanna see R one blocked off as its own type of neighborhood, like in this L shape or some other configuration, or would they be, because there's a school of thought out there that says, hey, it's better to kinda intermix those so that you don't have one giant pocket of medium density in a sea of garage doors on duplexes.
Right.
Right.
Versus.
Suburbia, or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a missing middle housing type thing, so I, I don't wanna necessarily sidetrack it too, but that's a question.
No, it's a great, it's a great point. If we do that, um, I would think that we would wanna approve, um, a zoning map and, and allow for in the agreement, the shifting of those zones around at design level, as long as the acreages don't change. So that the, the developer feels like they have some latitude in designing that and working through it. The council feels like they're comfortable with the density, it's not gonna change. And when it actually comes time to redraw the lines on the map, it's, it's at that point administrative. We're just following the development agreement.
I want the council to explain why they don't want R three.
You mean here or what?
Here.
Because I mean, as far as our zoning, we have R three in the zoning with throughout the city.
No, I'm talking about the, the annexation.
Just only if it fits there.
Why doesn't it fit?
Go look at it out there.
Yeah, it's not the place for it. I'd get rid of it.
Yeah.
Far as I'm concerned, you can shrink up R two, but.
I think, I think one of the things, and I, I thought this when Dan had originally kinda pitched the rural done right, is that I think part of the, whatever you wanna call it, of seeing a big block of townhomes and a big block of twin homes and R one and the state lots is having those segmented into their own areas. And I think if you look at other places that are much, much older, that have developed out, you see a mix of R one, R two, R three, commercial, all that in a lot of the walkable downtown. Not that that's what we're trying to do here, but just as far as doing rural done right, instead of seeing fifty fourplexes right next to each other and then a hundred and fifty townhomes, or a hundred and fifty duplexes and then all R one, I don't know. And so that's where, with that, with that thought of if council's okay with, 'cause I don't know that this L shape, the reason we had the L shape is 'cause we were breaking into R one, R two. If we're now gonna just go to R one, R two, I'd like to see something that says the developer can have up to thirty-eight acres. This map gets simplified greatly, but we can have up to thirty-eight acres of R two within the project as a whole, excluding the five hundred feet off the northwest corner or whatever it ends up being. And then the remaining hundred and thirty-something acres is, can be R one. And then that's more of at a staff level if council was comfortable with that. Or, or we just say, if we can just get to a point of thirty-eight acres of R two's acceptable and the remaining being R one is acceptable, then if we write that into the agreement, I think we come forward with a master plan when we start talking about doing traffic impact studies and that type of thing. And we say, hey, here's a pocket of, here's a ten acre, here's a five acre, here's a fifteen acre, and kinda break it down that way. But if we have those kinda thresholds to say developer can do up to thirty-eight of R two and the rest.
'Cause I'm going to assume that there's not necessarily gonna be all quarter acre lots. There could be thirds. You're gonna take up space, basically.
Yes.
There could be one acre lots in some of that.
Yeah, I would, I would guess that a lot of the stuff along the east and south boundaries in the blue is going to be half, three quarter acre.
A little bigger.
Or greater.
So that you have less much land, you're gonna put five hundred and fifty-six in it, how it fits.
Well, and that's part of the hillside development impact we do. We're not really sure exactly how that's gonna play out, but.
So I just wanna, just, just clarify, just one, are we gonna have maximum five hundred and fifty-six still?
No.
So if we do this thing that's sitting in front of you, if we go with a hard zone, R one, R two.
Uh-uh. It, it just means the adjusted lot sizes, it just saves five fifty-six.
And it will. Well, no, lot, five fifty-six is only if we have, um.
No, because we don't have any. Because there would be no restriction.
Density restricted those pods.
It would actually go up.
If we allow a hard, that's why I sent out this thing here, because if you do an R one, R two, you can build what you can build in R one, R two. Then it comes to how well can they maximize their, their spacing. It, R one, you can get somewhere around three point, what, it's, it's, I'll tell you what it is. It's forty-three hundred.
So you're calculating, the most it'll be now is five sixty-seven?
No, I'm saying that's an estimate.
Okay.
Making an assumption on the hillside development, which is an assumption. It's somewhere between five sixty-seven point two and six thirty-six. And that's depending on how efficient he can lay out the roads and all that stuff. And that's net of a open space conversation, too.
Is that taking into, sorry if I missed this comment. Is that taking into consideration the hillside density? Is that kind of maximizing, but probably isn't realistic when you consider the hillside?
So the six hundred number is just a straight gross area cal, no hillside development accounted for. So, and that's what Dan was trying to, was trying to forecast was, he just assumed half the density that you would typically get, but how the hillside is implemented. 'Cause there is a table in the ordinance that talks about it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know how the city's enforced that in the past, but, um, there's kinda two different ways to do it, whether that's at the subdivision level or at the building permit level.
So in the past, to answer your question, in the past, we've done it at the subdivision level. We, the council's pretty familiar with this. Um, come, this, we, we had a development that's here on the hillside here, and these are one acre lots. As you get higher up on the hill and it gets, gets steeper, we got into two acre lots and then we even had one that was a four acre lot. That was done at the subdivision level. I wasn't here, didn't go through the math or have the engineer. That was the result of the city and some engineer coming up with how to do this subdivision. One acre lots, then into two acre lots, and then a four acre lot at the steepest part. So that's how we've done that in the past, but, but that's gonna depend on slopes, actually the correct interpretation of that code. I don't know whether that was the developer saying, yep, would like to do that, that makes sense to us, or if that was the city actually doing that math and restricting it to that. I just know that that's how it has played out at least once in the city.
Yeah, because the, I guess the way I've seen it done differently at the building permit level is just that if we go put roads in and have one acre lots and someone has a one acre lot, but they put a sixteen hundred square foot house. or a thirty-two hundred square foot house,
Yeah.
Or a thirty-two hundred square foot house on a sixteen with a basement, like those...
Yeah, 'cause what we're restricting is the amount of, um, disturbed area. So, i- if you're building a subdivision, and you wanna have a certain size of homes as kind of your target for that part of the subdivision, you're gonna have to have a big enough lot to be able to accommodate that size of home. And disturb the, not more than the maximum amount allowed in that, on that slope.
Dallas, isn't that the area for the lift station, the drainage? I mean, isn't it subject to change? I mean, or is that a hard area?
No, that's, that's purely an estimate. When I've, when I've done other, other subdivisions of this size, I've seen generally two acre-ish for a, for a basin. Um, but when we get to the parks discussion, that could easily go to three if we're incorporating some kind of park into that basin. There's kinda two alternatives. There's a dirt hole with a fence around it, or there's a bigger that has tiers and grass, and looks more like a park, but has a dual purpose of a stormwater basin.
So, that's gonna have to accommodate all the drainage off that hill.
So, for our subdivision, and whatever's tributary, whatever drains to our property, yes.
Well, there's a lot of drainages off that hill.
Yep, so we'll have to go to the top of the mountain, and then have that as an offsite basin, based on the city's design storms, plus whatever our improved hard surfaces within our subdivision, and then we'll have to account for that in a basin.
Okay.
So, Dan, when you sent out that, um, spreadsheet, you know, I saw it, your number was five sixty-seven. I started getting chest pains when you hit six hundred.
Well, the five sixty-seven was based on that assumption of what the effect of the hillside development will be, which is an unknown. So, this is an estimate using, using a, a, uh, but what, what we're doing is we're not restricting to that number, we're estimating the number.
Okay.
What we're saying under that approach is, there's no restriction, other than what the zones restrict themselves. And we're recognizing that on the hillside, you're never gonna be able to approach that. So, I was trying to give you an estimate of what could be, if we allow that approach.
But between the five-five-six number, and the no density restriction number, the five-five-six number is us forecasting what would be a realistic R one inside of there. And so, if we were to do this without this whole development agreement, and just zone the whole thing R one, we would think, hey, we would get around this five-five-six. But when we talk about all these offsite improvements, that's a lot harder pill to swallow, when we're constraining ourselves to density, and then the city's saying, hey, even though your, your project doesn't have these requirements for open space, and other things, we want you to contribute. And so, in our mind, that's us balancing out where council suggested, hey, if we simplify this map, and we go to just what the R one allows, and R two zone allows, we might end up with more than five-five-six, but the more houses we can generate based on whatever the zoning is at the time of subdivision. So, whatever it says right now, it says, when rural done right gets approved, it's whatever that says. When we turn in an application, you guys have modified rural done right in five years, it's whatever it says at that point. We're saying, we're willing to live by whatever the zoning ordinance is, at the time of the subdivision application. But, but if we get away from these colored pods, and we just go to an R one, R two, very, very likely, we're gonna end up with more than five-five-six.
And, that hillside, that, that estimate of half, half-density hillside development, um, part of that is, is an estimate of what the effect of hillside development, but also, if Alex still intends on having some larger lots up in there, half acre lots, one acre lots, you're gonna get the same result. But they would be allowed by right to do as much as they can up to R one density restricted by hillside development. So, it's just trying to give you an estimate of how many potential homes.
Do you know where that water retention, the park would be, roughly?
I believe it's gonna be in the northeast corner. I just, I don't know if it's gonna be L shaped like that. I had it L shaped because of the city's master plan, that was coming through on the, either four hundred or four fifty north. And then the, the city view, I don't know what that road's called, but there is kind of a sweeping...
But that is the low point, gravity-wise, of this whole development?
The low pony there.
And both sewer and water run downhill, so that's the...
Because I was just wondering, you know, with the water all coming down off the, the hills, it'd be going through the subdivision.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have to look at that, that design, as far as what the road capacities are, and then when we have to start putting in storm drain. Um, but, but, so I anticipate there'll for sure be storm drain, at least in the north third. Might be the north half. Um, but depending on how much offsite water comes through there, and what kinda soil that is, and how much runoff's actually generated. But I, I do anticipate the basin for sure being in that northeast corner.
And there's different ways of doing it. We, they, they, depending on the soils, you know, we have a, um, sump design, that if you did sumps all, all the way through the subdivision, it could, it could lower the amount of a basin. If you do some oil removal and stuff like that, you could direct some of that into the gravel pit. And we, we do have an updated storm drain master plan. So, there's, there's a lot of wiggle room that, that could potentially go on with the design level. So, we would actually, we would zone the orange R one, and what we would do is, at the design level, decide what it needed to be. And that's purely an engineering and administrative function. Unless we start talking parks, and now it, now it gets back into a, you know, negotiated thing here. So, but we'll get to that when we get to that. So, but again, to circle back onto zoning, what does everybody feel about the pod approach, with the density restriction, and everything that comes with that? Um, and then what about the pod, you know, colors, and then, or a, just a flat zoning approach?
I kind of wondered, because there wasn't follow-through from Sharon's question, Councilmember Downey's on the R three, how, I mean, I think I know how Councilmember Burton feels. He voiced, and John, I don't think you did, and Rochelle, I don't know if you did. Is, I mean, what is the council's position on that, or is that just gonna come to a vote on?
I think that there's probably less of a concern about R three, if it's the pod concept, because you are restricting density overall. But if you're gonna go flat zoning, now you put R three in, now you're gonna drastically increase density in here.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that, if that, if they, if that makes sense to you, Sharon?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
The pod design, you're gonna end up with no more than five hundred and fifty-six residential units, and yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna have whatever rural done right allows in R three, to happen in R three. If you go flat zoning design, and now you actually have the potential for some major density above and beyond that number that I estimated, right? 'Cause you're gonna take, you're gonna take this zone here, which is sixteen acres, and potentially get as much as nine homes in, you know, nine residential units in that, ten acres.
I think the, kind of the, the thing I was not trying to go on a tangent, though, is that if you did have some kind of, if we did get away from the pods, and we went to more of just an acreage-type restriction, without strict pods, I think that seeing threeplexes and fourplexes, or whatever you guys are calling them, spread throughout versus just a condensed neighborhood of one type, I don't know if that's more palatable to council. I mean, there's, there's always talks of more affordable types of housing, and that's generally what that translates to. Um, but if you're coming around a cul-de-sac, or a bend in a road, and you have a bigger lot, and you have a threeplex on there versus a duplex, versus a big R one home, how you design those, it can be hard to tell. Not necessarily in Iron County, where you just have, everything's very strictly zoned, R two, R three, and it's very apparent that that's a townhome, that's a twin home, subdivision. Um, that's just...
I was just looking, because of the, the cost of it, it would be cheaper than buying a house, or that, or even a duplex, because it's on a smaller piece of property, which you're, that's all.
Yeah, and I think, I think from Alex's perspective, um, the R three one is not, or a single-family lot at those smaller sizes is not an attractive option to him for R three. So, if there was R three included, I think it would be in the, more of the multi-housing, multi-family housing type, whatever you guys wanna call it in rural done right, but the three to fourplex. We understand there's no apartments, no condo PUDs, but if we sprinkled in three or fourplexes, or even if we had a dedicated road off of the cul-de-sac that had those, I think that would be the direction that we would go, if that was a possibility.
Councilman Harris, I'm gonna put you on the spot. You said something about if you had your way, you'd get rid of R two.
I'd just shrink it up, but...
Shrink it up?
Not have as many of them.
Oh.
I'd rather see larger lots throughout the whole R one. Not smaller ones. I personally like the, the idea of having R one and R two not, not, like you said, not as, as boxy, like you drive down the street, and, okay, you look down, that's R two. You know, have a mix in there. That's just my opinion.
And that's, and that's, from a design standpoint, that's pretty easily doable, as far as, we would have to have a table, kind of an overall table, that follows every phase to track it. But when you come around cul-de-sacs, and bends, and roads, which we're obviously gonna have a fair amount of bends, if it, if a ten thousand square foot lot can have a single-family house, or a duplex, it's pretty easy to just say, hey, we're gonna put ten duplexes in this phase, and...
The, the homes he built over off of, oh, shoot, what is it called, by the, is it Z?
Diamond Z.
Diamond Z?
Yeah, uh, Crescent Hills.
Crescent Hills, yeah.
Is that what it's called?
Yeah, right behind Genpac.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, so, because you have, I believe you have half acres, I don't, is it quarter acres? And then you have some, like, twin homes in there.
So, Crescent Hills is, uh, in Cedar, there was a portion that was R two two and R two one. So, there was about eight thousand square foot single-family lots, but the north road of that was all R two, and those are all twin homes. So, the whole north, the whole north road that backs up to Genpac, those are all twin homes. And then everything south of that is all single-family. But I don't, I don't know if they have street view on there, but those are, in my opinion, nice-looking twin homes.
And in, in the Enig, I can't remember the...
Settler Square?
Yes.
Those are all, um...
Quarter acres.
Yeah, those are R one eleven.
Okay.
And that was a fun one, because that was the first R one eleven Enig ever did. And they were saying, if we do R one eleven, then there's gonna be brothels, and everything else. And if you go through that subdivision, I'd say that's like an oasis in, in Enig. That's the nicest subdivision there is, so...
I grew up in Enig.
They didn't do street view in that subdivision yet, so...
On the left are the twin homes, and on the right are the single-family homes?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if I could just interject, um, what you just described, there's two ways of doing that. And that's, one, we could do hard zoning, and then by agreement, allow you to come in and modify it. And then we just, we don't get into density restriction. Or, two, you carve off the area that we're, we need to restrain due to the Linda Smith agreement, and then you do, uh, a, a density restriction. You basically create the whole area as one, as, as, as an R two area, and then have a density restriction of no more than X amount of homes in that entire area, forcing you to go with X number of, of R one type lots throughout it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
That's the way you could do it, right?
I say that again, I was trying to...
So, you carve off the Linda Smith restriction?
Yeah, so we call that a buffer, or whatever.
That buffer, whatever you call that, and that's R one. Then the rest of it, you, you turn it all R two, and you put a total density restriction on it that keeps you to a certain number of houses. Forcing you to put in the majority of them in R one, and then allows you to just sprinkle through, as you do your subdivisions, R two throughout it.
Yeah, we, so we could do it that way, or we could say that whatever, everything off of that Linda Smith, yeah, I guess we would have to zone it R two, and then have some...
You just zone it R two, and then density restrict it.
Yeah.
So that...
But then we would be looking for a density restriction that's greater than the five-five-six.
Right.
Right?
Well, then, you could do density restriction of this five-six-seven.
But you would still keep the homes separated from, from the quarter acres, to the twin homes, to the duplexes? You wouldn't intermix it, right?
Right, well, you just zone it all R two, and density restrict it, and let them in their subdivision design, sprinkle them in, move them to...
You just take the entire subdivision, and say, you're gonna do five fifty-six, and that's as far as you can go? You've got R two in this section here, may it happen.
Well, no, you have R two in the whole area, but then let them res- sprinkle it out.
I know, you can change R two, and say you shrunk R two down, and make the rest of it's R one. You have five fifty-six to deal with, you know, you make the lots fit.
Right, but I'm saying...
How can you not do that?
So, what, what I'm saying is two different things. What you're saying is, is you'd still restrict R two to one specific area. And what I'm saying is, is you'd take the whole thing and make it R two, but by density restriction, they would only be able to put some, so many number of twin homes anywhere, which would yield the same result. It's just a slightly different version of this thing that we're looking at, the pod design.
Well, what was the other one, where there wasn't density restriction?
So, what, yeah, I think what I would...
Of zoning them all R one, R two, it's just that, at that point, you're doing it in blocks, these big blocks. And, and he's trying to say, how do we get away from having the big blocks? Either we allow them to go back and rezone them as we go, and, and stick with the same acreage, leading to the same density, or you do it by a density restriction on, on all R two. Either one lead to the same result, exact same result.
The, I think the thing that I would like to see would be more of agreeing to an acreage versus coming up with another arbitrary density, and saying, council's okay with
Sure.
Twenty-eight acres, and then what I've seen done, and what I've done in the past, is that we would just have a rolling table that starts with phase one, and says, because we might end up still doing some pockets of R two houses, or maybe a street, or one side of a street, or something.
Sure.
But if we just start and say, hey, we've got twenty-eight acres to work with of R two to start, and the remaining of R one, and then phase one, we chipped away this much, and just kind of roll that forward, versus trying to forecast and say, hey, we're, now we're at five-six-seven, or now we're at, just so that we can kind of have some flexibility there. Because looking at the five-five-six number, and then the requested offsite improvements, to just get ten more houses, I think, makes, putting all of city view in, and everything else, it makes it more challenging.
The only problem with that is, we're doing a little bit of administrative work, of adjusting the zones as we go, but we could do it. You know what I mean?
Y- yes, yeah.
The way I was proposing it was just, you, you wouldn't have to go, rezone anything. But it, but it does lead to what you're talking about.
Means sprinkling?
I'm saying, we have to color a map with a zone. That's the way zoning works. We have got to color it with a zone. If, even if we do it by development agreement, you have to zone it at the most that it could be, and then restrict it back by density, hence the pod concept. But we have to have a zone, and it's not big enough that we're calling this a master plan zone. We're not gonna do this as a master plan. We're trying to effectively master plan it, but we still have to zone this thing something. So, the advantage of what we were kind of talking about leads to very simple zoning, but it leads to also this block concept. If we wanna allow some wiggle room, we could say, in the, in the agreement, we will zone it, that blocky thing, to start with. But as they go through and they develop, we will, by agreement, automatically adjust the zoning. Um, and we would have to actually still go through the process to adjust the zoning, so that, that it's consistent with the subdivisions as they play out.
Yeah, and Dan, and you're right, Dan, because I, I wasn't thinking about that. I was, so, we would have to come up with a zone. I think as far as the purpose of this agreement, I think if we could get, if council... think if we could get, ca- if council was inclined to go the direction of saying, hey, we wanna see R2, R1 only, if we have something in here that says, we are willing to, with the restrictions along the Linda Smith frontage, allow for up to twenty-eight acres, or whatever that acreage is of R2, and then the remaining R1, then we would put together a zone map after the annexation comes through, and, and we have our lots laid out, and we're going through the traffic studies, and we have more design level topo to work with, an idea of what hillside impacts are, so if we can get to an acreage restriction in here of R2, R1, then, and we have that, and then this is the binding document that says, we're guaranteed this much R2...
Yep.
Then I think we come back through with an, with a zoning map and say, hey, this is where we're gonna do it.
All right, I'm game with it.
That works. You good with that too, John, is that what I heard?
I'm good.
What about you two?
I'm fine.
I, I'm hesitant, but...
Why ye hesitant?
It kinda leaves it open for, I don't know.
The increase in numbers?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, that is.
I'd say draw it up like that, get you started, get you working.
Well...
Give us something to see.
I did thr- I did see three of them, let's, I mean, we're not, we're not voting on it tonight, we're just trying to figure out what's gonna go in the agreement, we, we can, if there's a problem with it, when we work through the actual agreement, we can think of, we can think about it, but we need to send something to them. That sound good?
Yeah.
Don't let me rush ya, I just...
So Dan, if I, if I totaled those up, those, the purple and the yellow came out to thirty-eight point nine acres of R2. Are we feeling generous, did we round up to thirty-nine oh?
I put thirty, I rounded it up to thirty-nine, thirty-eight point nine, so I was like, okay, thirty-nine.
Acres.
Acres.
Okay, and that's with the exception of the civic. Okay. Um, so the water main connections is what somebody saw earlier, um, this is, again, I don't know how, um, how much this is super, super important, but it is something that we need to discuss, um, we have connections, um, in a water master plan of, of three eventually, um, and we had said we wanna see all three connections now, maybe an option of saying two connections now, and three after some number of homes. Um, the developer said, we'd like to see one connection now, two when there's eighty plus homes, three when there's two hundred and fifty plus homes. Um, and this, the, kinda the, the answer to this is probably more dependent upon the engineering than anything.
Yes.
Cause we, as we get the fire flow modeling, um, our modeling that they did, that they had, Bowen Collins did, assumed the entire thing built out, we didn't have any sort of scenarios in that modeling of what it would look like if there was only one connection for a certain number of homes. But the state engineer is not gonna approve anything that will yield less than adequate fire flow, um, and really the state engineer being the authority that we're gonna follow. Um, again, I don't know if this is the type of thing that we really need to...
What if we just follow what the state engineer requires?
I mean, in other words, I'm okay with their recommendation, as long as it is approved by the state engineer and the city engineer, yeah.
That's what I would go by the state.
That's, that's... City engineer's gonna have to look at it, and if they're not comfortable with it, the state engineer says, well, it's right on the margin, we, we can require that at the subdivision level anyways, um, so, again, I'm fine with their preference, just as long as, um, w- we have the ability to not grant something by right in an agreement that engineers don't feel comfortable with, so...
Water modeling generally is done, we obviously did the full build out, but gen- water modeling is generally done more on a phase by phase basis.
Yeah.
So, and usually that's, the initial fee we paid for that was pretty expensive, but usually it's like a thousand bucks, fifteen hundred bucks, we send them our CAD file for it, they plug it in, they run a model, they give us the results, and then they say, you do or don't meet fire flow, and if you don't, this is what you do. The numbers we came at was just a basically of way to say, hey, the eightieth lot for the road, we're assuming there's a water main in that road.
Yeah.
So assuming that pressure works up until then, we would have a water main in that road anyways.
And, and again, that, the reason why the, the model contemplated the entire project, one of the main reasons is that we knew that it was going to affect, um, the water tank discussion and, um, everything as a whole. So that's why, um, they, they modeled the entire thing, the entire build out, if you will, at different nodes, so I would say as long as it is subject to, um, city engineer approval and state engineer approval, we're probably fine, anybody have a problem with that? Um...
Is that area gonna, it's gonna be set aside for that water tank, no matter what?
Yep, and we were in agreement on that.
Okay.
So that's the next thing, is the water tank, um, the only difference, and, and I don't know if it's even a difference, but the only potential differences is whether we require the, the tank now, or whether we say, put in the road and infrastructure, and the city will build the tank using impact fees at the appropriate time, um, the advantage of one is they're gonna have sufficient fire flow above the city's standard on day one, um, but there's a difference between the state minimum and the city's standard, that's the gray area that gets us into that place, we probably don't want them to construct a tank that's just big enough for their development, w- it makes more sense to develop a tank that is...
Right.
Going to s- s- impa- be the city's second tank that the city, or the third tank that the city needs. Um, it's just that at that, at this point right now, is probably not the time for the city to sp- to spend that money, as this place builds out, we're gonna be collecting impact fees for every single house that goes in, which we'll build, and at some point, we'll probably speed up when we were gonna put the third tank in, we don't have it planned right now until like twenty years, maybe fifteen years is when we were gonna put in a third tank, so...
That third tank, uh, served the whole city.
Yeah.
Just not that...
It'll, it'll impact the whole city, it won't necessarily serve the whole city, but, but it'll impact, it'll be, it'll actually do an increase in, in level of service from a fire flow perspective for, for this whole side of the city.
Yeah, it'd balance out some of the pressure.
And it's, it'll do it in a way that's better for our system than what our master plan showed to putting a second, third tank right by the second tank.
Right.
Yeah, patience with this question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it says, tank later using impact fees, that would be our section of the tank, you know, like, they're gonna build, you know, they're gonna have a little tank, but we want a big tank.
No, they won't have a tank in the house.
We're not gonna do it.
We won't have a, but later on, we would be using impact fees to offset the cost of...
Building a tank.
Building the tank.
Two for the...
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying that impact fees will fully build or not build the tank, but all the impact fees from the subdivision are gonna be used for, uh, utility level expansion, that's the point of impact fees, that's what they pay for.
That's why I said have patience.
I thought it was a good question.
So I think that we're good with, cause that was our option too, and that was their recommendation, I think we're probably fine with that, but what we need is, we need, uh, we need the easement of the road, we want that y- infrastructure to be in place, so all we have to do at that time is put in the tank.
Mm.
Um, it's not really developable property for them, depending on hillside development, if they wanted to try to build some house up on the hill, it's, highest and best use is probably to put a tank.
Well, that's why I said, that whole area that is designated as open space in the future land use plan should be left open for that purpose, you know, and that would include easements, access, everything.
Ri- well, what, what we're talking about is specifically a road and a, and a water line to the tank site. The rest of this, um, we have not, we have not talked about, i- i- up to this point in the conversation.
But in the future land use, or, yeah, the future land manager, land use plan, it, or map, I'm sorry, it's, leaves that as open space, that area.
It does?
I think so, doesn't it Larry? Yeah?
Well, w- we, we could, um, talk with them as about, um, I mean, the way it is right now, they could try to build some houses up and in there, depending on hillside development standards, that's the way it is as of right this second, as we work through this, um, I'll pull up the, the flume. The flume has, okay, I see what you're saying. Open space slash limited development in this little triangle right here.
And that's the area of the water tank, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know what limited development means.
So, that's why I say, if you con- if you concurred with the, the flume, you know, then it, you just leave it.
Do you have any input on, was there any plans, have, have you gone down that road so far to think about what you wanna d- do there or not?
In that corner?
In this, yeah, up here on the hill?
Uh, well, I, I think it depends on what the city's requirement is as far as the parks.
Open space and parks.
Probably where we're, where we're going next.
We've got a head there, yeah.
Um, but, um, at, at a certain point, ex- excluding the hillside development ordinance that you all have, um, at a certain point, it becomes cost prohibitive to put roads and houses on very steep lots, and so, um, so I think we would, when we have design level and topography and all of that, uh, that's something that we would evaluate and say, at what point does it not make sense, and then you guys have the additional layer of the hillside overlay, or develop whatever, whatever's, the hillside development ordinance, and so we'll have to work between those two, so I think the intent of that being largely, depending on what the topography is, uh, would probably remain open space, or be...
Part of...
It, it could be a two acre lot, it could be a three acre lot, it could be...
So let's, l- let's finish that conversation when we get to parks, for the time being, let's talk water tank.
Does the flume have a definition of limited development, does it have...
No, it'd be in your general plan, if it's in there, where it says, open space slash limited development, I don't know if limited development allows for, but, but the flume is the guiding document to what the zoning will be, and if we zone that R1, then they can build R1. If we, if we zone it R1, but res- but say you have to do some open space in our development agreement, we could do that, but I'm saying that all the flume does is guide what the zoning should be, and we don't have a zone that's open space, right, does that make sense? So let's talk about it when we get to parks and open space, are we good with road and infrastructure now, tank later using impact fees?
So as we proposed, it was provide either by parcel or easement, the tank site, parcel easement, twenty foot maintenance road, and then, um, and then just, we had some guidelines as far as whether, once the city works on a tank design, if that coincides with the next phase of ours, we include it with our phase, or we do a public works project, which is a non-subdivision application, to put that in ourselves, but I think we're saying the same thing, so we provide the road and easement.
And, and, and I figured we'd get into the nitty gritty of the agreement, legally and administratively, but the general concept is...
Yeah, we give a tank site, we give an easement, we put in the road and then mains, or pay the city...
And the main.
The equivalent when they're doing it.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And, and we may very well do that in phase two, and work with the, with you on phase two, we may go after some grant money and some loan money and, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Or, um, I think having that site and recognizing, so we just had our water master plan done, and it was a little bit of an eye opener on some of our substandard fire flow, which of course, by definition, means that we're gonna now try to prioritize in- increasing fire flow, um, a- as soon as, maybe sooner than we need the extra capacity in the tank, because it helps us with fire flow, which also helps us potentially go after some grants.
Right.
So, um, but it, it puts it into the city's, um, you know, purview to get that done, and use impact fees, we can use impact fees looking forward and backward to put into the tank, either it's putting it in upfront with cash, or it's making a payment on a bond, so we can figure that out as we get there, but I think we're under, we're, we're looking at pretty much the same requirements, unless there's anybody that thinks that we should require them to put it in a small tank to service their subdivision, okay, if not, then let's move on. Okay, we already dealt with city view drive when we dealt with roads, so we're just gonna color that one done, go move forward. Valentine Peak Sports Improvements, this is really part of the open space and parks discussion, so, um, I, I've done some, one of the, one of the problems we have as of right now is we do not have, um, anything, uh, this came up in our work meeting on Monday with planning and zoning, for those of you that watched that, um, we do need to create some open space requirements and put it into our subdivision code, especially now subdivisions of a certain type are pretty much administrative in nature only, um, so we don't have any, I've done some research on what other cities do, what the county does, and it's, it's kind of all over the map, and the restrictions of percentages of acreage change as you get more, as you get more dense, as you get into, you know, commercial and you get into, you know, things like that, but from a standard subdivision process, I have, um, I looked up what Cedar City's code was, and they've clearly put a lot of thought into that, and have, I think, developed something that's pretty, um, intelligent, um, what they have is two hundred and fifty square feet per residential unit, once you get up to two thousand square feet of that assembled open space, then you're required to improve some amenities on, on that, meaning a gazebo, or, you know, park play equipment, or something like that, um, with a cap of three percent of the total acreage of the si- of the, uh, subdivision. That is Cedar City's code, I'm not saying...
For, for PUDs.
Um, no, that's for all other subdivisions, from what I could see, they have a different requirements for, for PUDs, it...
I don't think so.
I pulled it up. I copied it and pasted it.
I have, I have yet to put a park in a Cedar City subdivision that's not a PUD.
Been getting away with stuff for a long time.
I, I don't get away with anything in Cedar City, those guys probably beat me on everything.
Scott here?
Scott's here.
He's been quiet, sleeping.
He's been very quiet.
So, um, I guess we have a difference of opinion on that, I don't know that I'm right, I'm not even saying that I'm right, I'm saying that I, I read it, and it, from my understanding, it was all other subdivisions, and they have some other requirements for PUDs.
They do, they do change their ordinances very frequently, so it, it might be something that's newer, but the only time I've ever put parks in has been based on, has been based on PUDs, and it's the three percent, it is the three percent, and then, uh, and then they do require, it's kinda open ended, where they say it could be a gazebo, picnic table, barbecues, whatever, but I, the only one I've ever seen enforced in, in Cedar City, has been in PUDs, and when we go do a lot of R1, R2 type of developments, everyone comes out and says, where's the parks, and the dirty secret in Cedar City is that no one wants to maintain the parks, or pay for park standards, or any of that, and so there's city parks, and there's bigger parks, but that's why you don't end up with a lot of pocket parks because of...
Right.
The maintenance aspect of it.
And at the end of the day, I, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is to come up with some sort of methodology to an approach, um, because we have... Um, because we have, and I can't speak for the council, because I haven't heard the council as a group say what they want to say, but I can say that some off, some discussions here and there, over the last couple of years, with some of the council, with the mayor, conversations inside my own head, conversations with planning commission, we've talked about maybe the disadvantage of pocket parks. We've talked about how we'd like to see Valentine Peak Sports Complex be developed. It is, it's an incredible complex, which is partially built. And we, we feel like the subdivision will benefit greatly and would probably utilize Valentine Peak as its recreating, as its open space, as its walkability, um, probably as much as, as anybody else in the city. That's kind of where everybody goes. We have other parks throughout the city, but a lot of, there's a lot of recreating that goes on there. And rather than saying, we want you to do X amount of park, you know, you know, little pocket parks or something like that, or some open space that is up against the hill, unless you're planning on putting in a trail system, is anybody ever gonna use it? One of the, the concepts was, let you build out your full density, maximize the return on the investment of the acreage, but then put some money into Valentine Peak Sports Complex. Something that the rest of the citizens of the city who see this big subdivision come in and actually benefit the entire city to some degree and feel like this is a fair and equitable, um, relationship. The question is, is how do you come up with, with the number? And that's where I was headed with. And I was saying, if you figure two hundred and fifty square feet times the number of residential units, that equates to some amount of acreage. And rather than saying, yes, put in that acreage and do this or that, you know, what is the value of that acreage? Or the value of the cost of putting in that park, or the loss of that acreage from a value standpoint? Is that a good analog, or a good way to come up with some sort of fair contribution to Valentine Peak? That's all I was trying to get at.
What do you call it, pocket parks?
Pocket parks, you want to explain it, you take a subdivision and you say, one of the lots, maybe it's a kind of a funky shaped lot that's hard to put a house on, you turn that into a park. Little tiny little park, right in the middle of a subdivision.
So, it's, it's, it wouldn't be a pocket park, what I would like to see?
Right. Tell us what you were talking about.
Okay, you know how, in subdivisions, you got the sidewalks, you got all the houses. People like to walk, take their dogs or whatever. And I was thinking it'd be nice to have an area, not even big, that you could put a bench in, you know, those metal benches, and just rocks, where it doesn't have to be mowed or anything, so they just sit down while they're, if they're tired walking. And just space those out around the, it just makes, it'll make it more homey.
So, there's, there's what some people call linear parks, where you could have, what would it be conventionally called, like an alley, not necessarily an alley, but you could have some kind of gap with a trail through and it depends on, do we, would there be, as far as, you could have some kind of alley and trail network in between and you could have a bench in between there, you could have a fifteen foot wide strip, mid block.
Yeah, not big, just...
That could go through there. Um, I guess the, the big thing that comes up as far as, so obviously doing some centralized park is pretty straightforward. If we talk about pocket parks, linear parks, alleys, it becomes, one of the big questions is ownership and, and then the construction of it. So, is that something the developer puts in and then dedicates that strip or pocket park to the city? That the city owns and maintains? Do they deed just the property and the city does the improvements? Do they put in the improvement, deed it to the city, and then the city maintains it? So, it, it becomes a question of, there's a standard, there's a standard way, there's a standard city subdivision, which is roads and lots, and then when we do things that are what I would call creative, which are nice amenities and benefits to it, but it generally comes back to, if the developer doesn't have an HOA, he's not gonna stick, he doesn't want to stick around and go mow the grass on a fifteen foot strip in perpetuity, does the city want to take that on and then maintain it? And then how do we strike that balance? So, I think that those are benefits to a subdivision, but is the city willing to take on those parcels, linear strips and maintain them if there's not an HOA that, that does that for them?
And I was thinking not even putting grass in, just put rocks and just have a bench there.
But still, still there's the weed spraying and maintenance long, I mean, it looked great at the start, but, and then the other thing is that even, kind of what you're saying is that generally when you come to the curve, or to the corner of a road, you have a relatively sharp radius, usually it's like a fifteen foot radius. And so, it's just enough to get a pet ramp and a stop sign and that's it. And so, we could also potentially look at doing bigger radiuses on those to pull that back and have more in the right of way. And you could have a bench off of a pet ramp or something, so you could still have that.
See, and that would even be fine, just to, just to make it a little bit more, if people are walking and they get tired, they can sit. It makes it look more homey too. And more rural.
Well, I, I live in a, I live in a corner, uh, with a stop sign, and I think that's part of the city, right there where the stop sign is.
Usually it is.
I, I wouldn't want a bench in my front yard. That's really, I'm not gonna say, you know...
I knew you guys wouldn't like it.
So, I, I, I do have a question, because I, I've went to most of the planning and zoning meetings when you were talking about this and you said, you know, instead of these pocket parks, you know, it, it, we have this big complex already, but then, not, oh, look, Dan's talking, you might not even hear me. But until this totally developed, you know, then pour money into something at the Valentine's Peak. I'm here for like instant gratification, because when this is finished, I'll be at the cemetery. Probably, you know, I mean, there's chances, you know, even if I live a very long life.
Dude, you're in better shape than I am, I'm probably gonna be in the cemetery before you.
But, but is there something that we could work on, I guess a dollar amount, or a project at Valentine's Peak when this, when this development gets rolling? Like when, when you're putting in that?
I think Dan was gonna bring that up.
Oh.
And so, John's question was, is there something dollar amount wise that could instead be invested in Valentine Peak?
So, to answer the question, it's their residential neighborhood zone. They don't, maybe they don't know this, maybe this is new.
It's, it's, it's newer.
So, in their resident, this is what it says, residential neighborhood zone, there's a whole section on, you get past building setbacks, you get down to special provisions, and then they have a whole section on open space. And what I just described is, I mean, it goes clear down to number eight. So, it does this whole area and, and essentially what they're saying is two hundred and fifty square feet per residential unit with a maximum of thirty, of three percent of the total subdivision acreage.
So, this is, so this is the reason why I wasn't familiar with this. So, this is a relatively new ordinance, this is the ordinance where they allow you to go down to forty five hundred square foot lots.
Okay.
And so, what the city had said is, and they don't have the requirement for your normal R1, R2, R3 unless you're doing a PUD, but if you, they basically made the concession to say, hey, if you're gonna go to this small lots and there's barely gonna be yards, then we want to see something on the other end.
And typically what I, I, from what I was finding, the more you're allowing density, the more that you force needing for open space. Otherwise, you end up with just nothing but...
And that, and that was kind of the argument that I was trying to make, as far as currently, there's not an open space requirement in, in Parowan City's R1, R2, R3. And then, so you're, we're gonna have pretty good sized lots, up to estate sized lots. And so, and then there's a park right across the street. The question I was gonna ask Dan is, are there gonna be impact fee, park impact, park impact fees collected on all these homes?
One thousand six hundred and thirty one dollars each residential unit.
When they buy the house?
When they get their building permit.
Okay. So, it's one time?
Well, anything we look at is gonna be a one time impact. Um, unless they're doing some, like you said, some sort of...
Unless there are HOA or something.
An HOA or something like that. Um, so, you multiply that, the impact fees out by, whatever the zone, whatever it is. Impact fees that we'll collect over the ti- time of this, this whole thing will be somewhere around nine hundred thousand.
For parks and, for parks?
Just for parks.
For parks.
And so, that's kind of where I was going.
That's a pun, that's a pun build out. So, it's, it's not wrong, um, and, and the question is, there again, this is a hundred and seventy acres, um, in a, in a, in a master plan, large development like this, it's not uncommon to say, we'd like you to see some, to do, to do some parks. Um, this is development agreement, this is, um, annexation agreement, we can ask for something like this. What we can't do, and it, when we just annex in and then at the subdivision process, expect something. So, if we want to have something like that put in, there's, there's some options. There is, hey, put something into the, that, there is this whole conversation of what, what he was talking about, doing something down here in a drainage basin where you can do some sort of a park thing down there. There is the conversation which Dave was alluding to, sorry, Councilman Burton was talking about, as far as open space. My, and my personal thought, open space on the hill makes sense if it's actually usable. Um, random people aren't just gonna go start climbing up a hill and restrict themselves to some boundaries. You know, I don't think that that's really saying we're satisfying open space. I think that if you put a trail network along there, I worked with BLM to connect through this little corner and did some sort of a trail network, I think that that could totally work for some open space. Um, even though there isn't a exact requirement in, in, even in Cedar, in their R1, R2, they, they do contemplate, we talk about open space. I, we know we're going to develop something like that in our code, that's something that makes sense for open space. But, back to Dallas's point earlier, we don't want to have just a bunch of additional random stuff that the city has to maintain. It's really expensive to maintain this stuff. Water is a big prior, is a thing, because everybody wants to have grass everywhere you go. And, and grass, you gotta water, you gotta fertilize, and you gotta mow. And labor is our single biggest cost of, of, um, I was gonna say cost of goods sold, but we're not business. So, cost of maintenance is labor. So, back again to Valentine Peak. Um, and for the, for the development, you know, I would think that they're gonna want to see this also built out and have some amenities there. It's gonna help sell lots in the subdivision. Is there something that we can come to an agreement there? Um, we have some pickleball courts, we really have a need for lighting the fields, we don't have any sort of playground equipment. We've talked about putting something like that in, we are building a bike park right now, we are, we're trying to build pickleball. We're running out of grant money on pick, on fully to building our pickleball stuff, but is there, you know, I don't know. Is there something that we could, we could come to an agreement with Alex on that? Especially if we're not requesting them to use up any of their, you know, developable property. Every lot that you don't say you guys gotta put in a pocket park is a lot that can be sold, so...
And so, I, I think from the, as far as a stormwater basin type, um, facility, so there's, there's two different options. There's dig a big dirt hole with some slopes and fence it, so no one can get into it and run all your stormwater into it. And that's a, probably a noticeably smaller footprint. Um, or there is put some tiers in it, so you have a nuisance water, low tier, a mid tier, a high tier, or a gradual slope and ball fields on it, and that might be a one and a half, two times. We're obviously gonna have the requirement to put in a basin regardless. We, and I guess what we're trying to do is balance where there isn't a requirement currently in the code for R1, R2, R3. There's already a, there's already a parks impact fee that's gonna get assessed on each of these lots. And so, how do we, with this additional request for, I think the developer's probably more inclined to put in his own park and incorporate it into, um, the stormwater basin. I'm assuming that the stormwater basin, I don't know if the city takes on stormwater basins.
By law, we have to now.
Okay. So, the, there's already gonna be a pro- a property for stormwater basin that's gonna be deeded to the city? And then, do we want to see some park aspect incorporated into that? Or do we minimize the footprint, make it as small as possible? And just have a big deep hole with a fence?
They do it a lot to make it, you know, like you were saying, the
Yeah.
baseball field, soccer fields, what, they use, they do that a lot now.
Yes, yeah, there's, there's a lot of stormwater quality type things that have not made their way to Iron County, but it's very, very common to see those incorporated into park structure.
Isn't there one in, isn't there one down by Santa Clara Ivans? I'm trying to pull it up so that we can look at it.
There's one in, um, so Equestrian Point in Cedar, but I don't know that that's, that you could see that on Google. There's one in Washington, the Live at Temple, that they're building, um, that's a, a pretty good sized park. And on the one end, it's a flat play structure, and on the other end, it's probably eight feet deep with slopes that come down in.
Yeah, it's right where the Virgin River Trail ends, right there.
This is the one in Equestrian Point.
Yeah.
They've, they've developed, they have, this is a little higher, you can't really see the stuff, but where they have playgrounds and stuff, it's a little bit higher. Down in here is the, is the low point, right?
Yep, and then that rip wrap is where they have their outlet and storm drain. So, you can play baseball or kickball or whatever until there's a big storm and then your outfield starts to shrink.
I wonder if they have a street view.
I was curious, you said you, uh, fence them out. How did, what did you mean by that?
If it's just a pure storm.
Yeah, so, in a, in a, in a just straight stormwater basin, that's just for stormwater only.
Oh, for on...
We would just cut a deep hole with two to one slopes and put a fence around it, so no one gets in and a gate for, for maintenance access.
Versus having it as a park or some...
Right, and so, and then we, you would generally see that kind of tiered design, which it, it is kind of hard to tell, just because it drops off, but you would have a lower portion with, for your nuisance water, whatever, and then it starts backing up as bigger storm hits. And so, there's the potential that if you put some ball courts or your outfield or something is underwater until it percolates or discharges or whatever.
I think it makes sense, if you're gonna have to have it anyway as a retention or whatever area, but to make it a dual purpose. And then that takes care of the, some of the open space or...
They're actually really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any talk at all of any trails through this area, um, that could be incorporated into our future master act of transportation? And the reason I'm asking is I know it's very popular and it's considered a neighborhood amenity that increases the value of homes in, in the area to have trails, so have you all talked about that at all?
Uh, I haven't talked about it specifically with Alex. I don't know from, do you guys have a trails master plan or anything that's incorporated with your transportation?
We do.
Is it just a bike lane or a widened sidewalk, or is there actually like a trail network?
There's a trail network, and it depends where it is in the city, what it is.
Okay.
We just recently, uh, finished it.
But if it was tied in, I mean, that's, part of that, we could talk about that as, I mean, even...
But I think pretty much on that side, I mean, I can pull it up, we, we, we have, it goes in and around Valentine Peak, comes back around the east side of the, of the, um, fairgrounds. We don't have it going out through your...
No, I know that, but if it tied in, I mean, again, it's an amenity that people like, it's something that could be considered part of this calculation. If it's something that's incorporated, it is, it is, in a sense, you know, green space.
Well, and I think it, it really makes sense only from a, when you consider that there's houses and subdivisions, I think it would make sense if it potentially followed a natural path. So, see, so, because basically, we have a trail system that, in fact, we, we're applying for grants right now. We were, we were hoping we found out today, but that follows essentially what this new one hundred north is gonna be and around ties into the parks, comes back up around here and loops in to go up the canyon and then around Valentine, I mean, Lions, and then out. But if there was some way that it, that there was... and then out. But if there was some way that it, that there was a trail system that could tie in around the outside, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm just giving, I'm throwing out ideas of how, if we're gonna have a park at the back corner, and it's gonna have fields and things, and people like to walk, and you know they're gonna be cutting through, trying to get to other trails.
So, how do you tie that into a subdivision? Maybe on one of the m- major arterial roads or something like that?
I would say it's possible, depending on the flexibility of the city. Because the city is going to have, and we're kinda getting back to the maintenance aspect again, but the city is gonna have standard road cross sections for each size of road. And so you look at the master planned roads that go through this project, and you say, hey, their master plan would be seventy-five foot, and there's a strict section on there that's curb gutter sidewalk, and this much asphalt and parking and all that.
One step ahead of you. We have typical sections that include it, and with, with and without it.
Okay.
On almost every size.
Yeah, so then if there is the ability to put one in versus the other, and include that in a public right of way, so that it is a, dedicated to the city, and it's a city trail, in lieu of putting two sidewalks right next to the road, um, and generally on those bigger collector type roads, that's a more safe feeling design.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so if there's the ability to do that, then I, I think we would look at it, um, because, I don't know, I mean, I'm an engineer that likes right angles and stuff, but Alex is a lot more crea- I think he would be amenable to having some kind of trail and that kinda thing. But I look at, so I don't know, it sounds like there's not anything that's shown on that plan through our project, but I look at those trails as being no different than roads or other infrastructure that are master planned. So, if it's shown on the master plan, and it goes through the project, then it's a requirement.
Yeah, and it, and I, I'd have to pull it up, but we do have different typical sections with the multi-use path on one side, sidewalk on the other, that fits within the right of way width, depending on, see, this is the arterial, um, with the multi-use. We have it on, this is a major minor collector with a multi-use path, and without a multi-use path. So, yeah, we, we do have that, um, but it, it doesn't shown, it isn't shown on the master plan for the trails, other than up, up this road here. Um, but if, but I, but I think you were asking, what if we, we tied in something? If, let's say you have some sort of a park tied into a drainage, you know, system here, and if you had a trail that then tied back to our trail system or something like that. I just wonder what, what's, what's a priority, what's more of a priority? If, if that can be shrunk and give, and when I say that, I mean, the orange lift station, pod one, can be shrunk to its minimal functional use, and that can be more developable property. In exchange, and in lieu of some development being put into Valentine Peak, what is our priority? I don't know, is, would the city wants to have yet another park to maintain, when we haven't really developed out our, our main recreation area of the city. That's all I was getting at, as far as, you know, build out of Valentine Peak. I mean, if, you know what I'm saying, if you could get another couple acres of developable property there, is the trade-off, and, and, and tha- and the, the savings or the additional revenue you get from selling those lots goes into something somewhere else. From a revenue standpoint, it's identical to the developer. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
How much acreage is that, the orange or whatever?
Three point six six.
Pardon me?
Three point six six, according to this, right?
Yeah, I did-
Three point five five.
The, yeah, the way that's drawn though, is I drew it to the center line, and then it just, I, but it, it'll all be, we'll have to do an overall drainage study, and then look at footprints, and then see what depths, and then we'll also do soil testing to see what infiltration rates we get out of the soil. So, but I would say in general, I've, I've seen similar sized projects end up in about that, at least a two acre. Um, and the one that I'm thinking of specifically is two acre, but it's eight feet deep. Um, and so it just, there's a balancing act of a lot of different factors in designing them. But I, I would assume that it's a multi-acre pond for an area this big, plus the offsite, plus the offsite hillsides.
So, there's gonna be a certain amount of acreage, no matter what, so you don't know what the trade-off is actually gonna be, because you have to have-
I'm saying it's the concept of a trade-off.
Yeah, but there's gonna have to be a certain amount there.
Requirement, there's gotta be some.
Right.
And again, you can do some designs and, and not have to have as big of a pond there, or we can direct a lot of that storm drain to the, to the gravel pit. Um, not, not that far down, but, but a lot of that could be done, and ac- actually give back acreage with, with the trade-off being, I'm just saying, do we wanna have another larger park or recreation area that we're down mowing lawn on at the corner of this subdivision, versus money put into Valentine Peak?
Well, if you look at it that way, because you got the ball, you got the soccer fields and the ballparks right, right there. You know?
Yeah, and soccer fields and ballparks are good for recreation of those sports.
The concept of using that detention, I mean, I think it's great, but we need it.
Right, that's exactly what I'm saying. I love the concept, love it.
Yeah.
Especially if you're gonna say, we wanna have some of this dedicated, if you can get some double usage of that same acreage, that's a, that's a win.
Well, that's what I was saying, if there's gonna be a certain amount anyway, and you can get dual usage.
We just don't know what the-
Right.
Acreages.
Hell, they get their studies.
Can you build some more pickleball courts right there?
No.
I'm joking.
This is just a, another piece of it. If it's a grass park there with the drainage, and we are gonna try to run that into our recharge, do we want that to be, having chemicals put on it and things like you would a park?
No, if we're gonna run it to our recharge, it's just becomes at that point detention, you know, all you're doin', or collection. Actually, you don't even need a lot of acreage. You just maybe need to have, have some way to separate oils and trash. Cause we don't wanna put, we don't wanna put dirty water into recharge, cause it's not just holding it in the gravel pit. Our point is to sink water. We don't wanna put oils and try to sink that into the aquifer. So, for, so there may be, be some sort of a, just a collection area, and then some oil separation, and then, and then take it all out to the gravel pit. And our, our updated storm drain master plan contemplates that being a possibility. They're gonna have to detain it, or put it in there and do some oil separation, so, um, but that could free up a lot of acreage.
Well, to me, I don't think we need that, because we've got the ball fields and soccer fields.
Right. So, is, uh, back to where we started, if that's the case, is there some amount of contribution to that that makes sense? And then we just let them develop?
Above and beyond the impact fees that are already-
Above and beyond the impact fees.
But if we don't have a code, or an ordinance, or anything stating that a developer has to do that,
Then it just goes down to-
Make them do that?
Just because it's a, th- that's just annexation. You wanna, you wanna be in the city, we wanna see you do some of these things. Or we don't have to. Uh, I'm not saying we have to do anything.
I mean, not sound negative, but it's, I don't understand how we can make them even do any of it, but.
No, we can't make, no, no, we can't, Dave, other than if we decide that we want to see that as a condition of annexation, of-
I mean, to me, the whole-
Hundred and seventy acres.
Drainage situation over there is a easy, basic way to get some free play area, you know?
Get some what?
Just some free playing area, just grassy area right there.
Adding a park to maintain though.
We have a hard time maintaining what we already have. I don't see the point of putting in another one, personally.
Then I still go back to, I don't know how you don't, you're gonna have to make everything a developer do this sort of scenario. Give, you're, what are you gonna do for us for free? It's not in your code. It's not in your ordinance. It doesn't say anything that you have to do.
And if we annex without a development agreement, you're absolutely right, we can't. As part of an annexation agreement, the city gets some positive im- some positive stuff to offset the impact of everything else.
But like, I mean, we need some sewer brought over towards the pickleball area. And I have talked to Alex, if he'd be willing to pull that over, and he seemed to be good with that.
Is it sewer?
Yeah, just, just popping it over there. I guess we already have water there, but he said he would bring the sewer over there, whatever we needed right there.
Yeah, it's about three hundred feet of pipe versus putting in some park stuff, so, but yeah.
I'm sure it's a-
So, your vote is no open space requirements, no park requirements, is that what you're saying?
It'd be nice, I just don't know how you make them do it, so.
Well, we make them do it, because we're in an annexation agreement, we're negotiating. We don't have, we, we, we don't have to make them do anything.
Well, and we can put it in there, and they can say, um, heck no, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
And then they come back and say, this is our compromise. Like, we don't know until you ask, I guess. You can tell us to go pound sand, I mean-
Well, and I, I think that it was, it was put in here, and then our kind of rebuttal in this was, hey, where there's not a basis in the ordinance, and I certainly understand Dan's point, is this is a development agreement, annexation is different than already being in the city and just saying, hey, guys, here's our subdivision. Um, but for us-
Talking ten acres, it's not a deal. We're talking a hundred and seventy acres. Thirty percent increase to the size of our city. To not say you need to do something for parks is saying- Other than what we get from the impact fees, right? But if you do a master plan development, you wanna see them build some, some city, and city includes some of this stuff. Up in Bryanhead, they said, build us a public safety building. And they said, okay, that makes sense. We're doubling the size of your city. So, this is about a major increase to the size of our city, and having some sort of fair offset to the impacts. We don't have to require a single thing. We will collect over the life of this somewhere around nine hundred thousand in impact fees, which can go into our parks. It can go into, we can put it all into Valentine Peak if we want to. If we justify it, we can't just, it has to be related to the growth, right? We build new stuff with it because of more people and the needs of those people. But this is entirely a negotiating point.
Well, y- you know, with the, the nine hundred thousand dollars, that's over a fifteen year period too.
Or thirty.
Or thirty, or, or whatever.
Yeah.
So, and like I said, you know, in, in some of the earlier planning zoning, let, you know, Alex, let's do something in Valentine's ca- peak, cause it's already there. So, if, if we were to say, you know, sewer line, but then maybe a playground and restrooms, would that be something that Alex would consider?
I, I, I guess we're-
I mean, you can't answer for- I mean, we're talking about a PUD out here of fifteen acres, and saying, we need pickleball courts and playground equipment. This is a hundred and seventy acres, and we're saying, yeah, we can't make them do anything. I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I didn't-
No, I'm not talking to you. I'm saying in general, what is a fair impact? And, and we can require it at the, at this level. And it, to the point we ask too much, they say, go pound sand. We'll build our own water system, we'll build our own sewer system. But then they'll probably wanna do an R four K zone, and R four K zone will say, hey, you gotta do X amount of open space and all of that stuff. We'll end up with higher density, butt some open space out there. We just won't have to maintain it. The county will.
So, I, I think-
The city.
I think what, from our perspective, we're just saying, hey, we, we don't, where there's not something in ordinance currently, I, and there's not dollar amounts in here, it's just left blank. So, I think there's, our preference would probably be to put it into our project if it was a park thing. But depending on what the city wants to see contribution wise, above and beyond the tra- or, above and beyond the impact fees, is if it's, hey, we'll put a sewer line, like, is it a hundred thousand dollars? Is it fifty thousand dollars? Is it another nine hundred thousand doll- like, w- I, we just, in the absence of something that we can say, hey, the ordinance says this, tha- and then if we apply that to our project, that would translate to this dollar amount. What the city's asking for is therefore somewhat equivalent, we're getting a smoking deal, we're getting screwed. I don't, we don't have anything to evaluate, and where this is left blank, I don't know if it's-
And therefore, it's back to a negotiation.
Yeah, and so I-
And we're negotiating, we're giving a lot more on zoning, a lot more density, and there's a trade-off, there's a balance. Like, we could say, it's all our one, cause that's what the master plan says. We go back a hundred units of buildable stuff. We're talking millions of lost revenue. I'm saying, what is a fair back and forth negotiation? What is our priority as a city? Do we wanna see trails? Do we wanna see a park inside there that we now have to maintain? Or would we rather say, put some somewhere else, or we're good with nothing, and we'll just continue to build out Valentine Peak as we can find grants? It's, it's, it's a bigger holistic conversation, and we can get there justification wise however we want. And at the end of the day, what we need to decide today is what we wanna ask for. And then they can say, well, that sounds reasonable in light of the give and take on all these things. Or they can say, that doesn't sound reasonable. We'd really like to develop our own thing. And then we say, are you gonna continue to maintain your own thing? Do we, are we comfortable with an additional park? And that's why it's a back and forth, right?
I, I do think on the trail comment about two hundred north, I would think that, because I know part of the reason that we liked R three, and the potential of having a PUD, is having some kind of entry monument and the maintenance of that. And so, I wonder about putting a trail on two hundred north on the master planned road, going through our project all the way to the east, and then whether we, I, I don't, I think that the intent is for this to be a city subdivision and not have an HOA. Um, but I think that to have some kind of entry monument, and then have a wider road with a meandering trail or something, but again, it's one of those things that if it's a master planned seventy-five foot, and we bump it out to a hundred, and don't put a sidewalk, but then put a trail, and it's more of like a linear park with some benches, does that check the box for the city? I guess that's what we're trying to get to. It sounds like, what I'm hearing from councils, that a separate park in the detention basin, probably not the best use of funds. But we're still trying to figure out where it's not currently required in the zones that we're requesting. Do we work with the city to do something in ours and do a trail that punches through, that's not on the master plan? Is it, no, we'd rather just see all of that money go towards the park that's next door to you? And what does that actually translate to in dollar contributions?
The park next to you, you're talking about the Valentine Peak?
Yes, yes.
I think that we should get some investment in that.
I agree. But-
What would you call some investment?
Well, that's, I know, and that's the thing, that's what's hard, is a dollar amount.
Well, do you really wanna know?
So, three percent of green space?
Be five acres.
Five acre, yeah, five point four.
Which is a pretty, pretty good sized park.
Yeah.
So, if we were saying, how much is that park worth? Could we hit a number close to that? Or is that?
Well, I, I, it depends on what, what you define as a park, because that's the other thing that it comes down to as far as saying, hey, we wanna park. And it's like, do we have a play structure? You know how much pickleball courts cost, basketball courts cost? Do we have a trail around it?
Well, I'm just talking about, just the five acres. So, if we move the five acres that, that you have to have for your subdivision, or, you know, that hundred-
Like what?
That five acres worth, can we put it into Valentine's Park? And you can build homes on those five acres. Does that make sense?
I, it makes sense, it does make sense, but that's, I, I guess the, it makes sense in what you're saying, but in the, it doesn't make sense in the sense that that's not a part of the ordinance that's currently-
We know it's not part of the ordinance.
It's not the ordinance, but it's of good faith to the city.
I, yeah, but I, I think that the, the park aspect is one of several in this agreement of, if we were looking at just parks, and not all, I, I think we're trying to balance all of these issues in one, and so to say, and I, I, the other part of that too, is that the, I just wanna make sure we're not doing the misconception of saying, hey, if these lots get developed and they're selling for a hundred thousand an acre, or I mean, a hundred thousand a lot, just to use round numbers.
Yeah.
And so that's five hundred grand that goes into Valentine Peak. And so, that's five hundred grand that goes into Valentine Peak. Well, that's just what they're listed for. That's not the actual development cost for land, water, and improvement costs. And so, if the profit on those is twenty five grand, fifteen grand, or thirty five grand, then we're talking about a hundred and twenty or- do you see what I'm getting at? So-
Oh, I see what- yes, exactly.
So, it's not- so, I- I just didn't want you to think that-
So, are we asking for fifty thousand or five hundred thousand? Is basically what you're saying, you know?
I think Dave's asking for more.
Which we'll give- we'll give what we can.
Yeah.
Or whatever David was-
What is- what is the profit on a- on an R one lot? I don't know that- so, if it's twenty grand, I've already done the math. It comes to two hundred and ten thousand dollars if it's twenty grand. I can plug in that number. And I'll tell you how I got there. Five hundred and fifty six times the total acreage, you get to the- you get to the- but then developable acreage, that's even given the credit for removing the roads and all that stuff, which following that thing, it doesn't actually make sense. You multiply that by that, you get your total, um, availability. That's ten point four five buildable lots that you're giving up. If you take the profit margin on ten point four five buildable lots, that's two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
And you take a- take the park fee out of that, so it drops it down to about two hundred thousand, right?
No, what park fee?
Like the park fee for impact fee?
No, the park fees are gonna accumulate based on every house. So, we're gonna get over the life of this thing once it's fully built out. Assuming the impact fees don't change, nine hundred thousand dollars over the next ten to thirty years.
Yeah.
I think what he's saying is how many helms you-
Yeah, it would be ten lots.
Times-
Times-
Your sixteen hundred dollars or whatever. I think it's what-
Minus the park fees we would've otherwise got, you would add back in. Is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, I- I have to be fair, you know?
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
It's just, you're not a very good negotiator.
Well, we're back.
And so, that adds sixteen thousand. It adds sixteen thousand. Now, you're back up to, you're two hundred and-
Two hundred and fifteen.
Two hundred and twenty five thousand.
We're almost exactly at four pickleball courts.
(laugh)
Because I do know how much they cost to build.
You do, you do. Or bathrooms. Um, bathrooms would be a fan favorite.
And I- I also, I- like I said, I can't speak for Alex, but Alex is a builder first and foremost before he was a developer. And so, that's where, as far as a dollar amount contribution versus a-
Building something else?
Right.
There- yeah, there- there could be some- something there, but that's way more for-
Well, and that's- that's why it was written the way it was,
Yeah.
to allow for a lot of flexibility that we could end up with the same result.
That goes a long way, too, that- that the residents appreciate what they do for them.
Yeah. Well, again, what it goes back to is, it- it makes it more of a attractive community for Alex to sell lots in.
Yeah.
So, do we wanna throw a number in there and- and move on, um?
So, the developer preference was wants a discussion to determine what the requirement is. And we basically have talked about that, and again, it's just a hypothetical.
Yeah, we don't have- we don't have code to point to. So, it's just a kind of a what's a fair- what's a fair thing? What's something that- that feels fair to the city, that feels fair to the developer, that- that everybody sees this as a positive win, positive contribution, a positive improvement to the development, um, an amenity, you know, what is that? What does that look like? There's- there's, other than my weak approach to come up with a number, there's- I don't know, you pick another random approach.
Oh, that's a-
Did you come up with the number?
That was a good approach.
Yeah, he did.
What was it?
Two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
Towards something.
Yep.
And if he built it, it would be a lot less for him because he wouldn't have to do the money. He could just build it, whatever that would cost.
And then there won't be any investment in phases, 'cause we'd be adding impact fees.
Would you let him choose what he would want to do?
No.
Well, no, I think we'd wanna work with him on it.
Yeah, we're-
But we would- but we- we would say to the degree that, well, either put some cash in on this as a contribution. Here's the other thing. A- a cash contribution, we could probably actually stretch far more than the- than the gain of- of ha- of the- his savings on the other. In other words, we can get grants, and when we go for grants, if we have a contr- cash contribution, it'll- like, we could take two hundred thousand and turn it into four hundred thousand.
Yep.
So-
With grants.
I know this doesn't make any difference, but if they- if he donates the money to the city, does he get to write that off on taxes as a donation?
I'm not an accountant, but-
Probably.
Depending on how it's written up and we write him the right paperwork, probably. I don't know if that works on a subdivision, though. Would have to ask Alex's accountant.
Yeah, that's below my pay grade.
At least he still has a smile.
Are we putting a number in there and going with it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, give me a number.
Let's do the number you came up with.
Two twenty five.
Okay, two twenty five. We'll put that in and see where that goes. Okay, Civic Commercial Pod. By the way, I don't think we have too many more, um, issues here that are even much of a thing. But this one has been. I know that there was some talk about this. I think originally, almost everybody remembers hearing that this would be deeded to the city. The way it was written up in that agreement is that it could be purchased by the city at market rates. Obviously, there's a big difference in that approach. I don't know what else to say about that. I'm trying to see if there's anything in your notes, but-
That's the way I remember it.
I apologize, I was having- can you repeat what you said?
Good, so I just said, this is the pod three, the Civic Commercial.
Okay.
And I don't know if it was a genuine misunderstanding or if this is, we're just negotiating to this. The city had been under the impression that this was gonna be dedicated, um, the original- that the original offer was it would be dedicated for civic slash commercial use. And if it wasn't used in ten years, it could be reverted back to R one, subject to the total density restrictions. We heard that as it would be deeded to the city or school district, um, and the way it's written up in the agreement is, is that we would have the option to buy it at market rate. And if it- we didn't buy it after so many years, it could go back. Um, and I think it just says set aside. That's what it says here in the thing. It says it would be set aside for either. So, set aside doesn't necessarily say deeded, um, that we could've received it one way and you meant it another way, um.
Yeah, I think Alex's intent was never to just give
It wasn't.
six and a half acres to, um-
Sounded really good.
Um, and- and I think the- so, I- I think it was his intent that it would, um, that, uh, that set aside meant that we would zone it, that we would set it aside from a zoning standpoint for either a civic or a commercial use. And then the way that we had written it in the agreement that was sent over was that depending on if it's a school site, six and a half acres might be appropriate. If it's a fire station or a public works building with a yard, maybe it only needs to be an acre, maybe it needs to be three and a half, depending on the use. But I think- I think that initially Alex had talked to the school district, and they had said that their sites for elementary, I believe, was in the six acre range. And so, that's kinda why we set aside that six and a half, um.
And you say set aside and we hear given. I mean, I still hear it. In my- as you'd say it, I still hear it. I know how we got to this misunderstanding.
Yeah.
And I- and I will, you know, give Alex and you the, you know, the credit saying-
Like, wow, Alex is great. He's gonna give us that. I guess he was giving it as well.
Well, I guess I said set aside, meaning that we're not moving forward with plans on it to develop it.
Our parks director was like, sweet, we can build more baseball fields. And I was like, hang on now, you know, we're talking all kinds of ideas.
So, the clarification on that is- is what it is in the- in your piece of that, so we can- I mean, that's the clarification.
Okay. I'm sure the school district can buy it.
Okay, so that's what they have proposed in the agreement. That was just the difference of opinion on that?
I feel like if we misunderstood, we're sorry.
Okay, we're saying we're fine with that? We'll move on to the next thing?
Yes.
Okay, um, traffic impact study, we just- we just- so, storm drain, no material difference in our agreement, their agreement. It's gonna have to be dealt with, and it's gonna be based on the engineering, based on the study and comply with the city's plan. Power study, same thing. We're gonna require a power study, um, and, um, what we writ- wrote in there is that any impacts that are gonna be required to upsize something are gonna be required to be done by them. We don't really expect a significant impact or cost. It's possible we may have some lines that need to be upsized. The substation, we know, can- can handle the additional capacity. Not a concern there. Um, but we do- we are gonna require a power study and have them comply with the results. Traffic impact study will be required to be done after the im- after the, um, annexation. Um, sewer lift station fee, um, this is just the fact that- that we said that the city would, um, potentially be able to do a sewer lift station fee for any customers that are op- on a lift station, which would impact pretty much the entire development. Uh, we don't have that in place, but if we did that, um, we've already contemplated it in the annexation agreement. So, there shouldn't be any sort of surprise by the developer if we do that. And there wasn't any material difference in our two agreements. Um, we talked a little bit already about the master planned improvement requirements. I think that we've probably worked through the issues that that would've applied specifically, talking about the roads and all that stuff. So, we- we've kinda put those in.
Yeah, our- our addition to that was just to say that by entering into this agreement, we weren't trying to preclude ourselves. So, I- I guess the only thing of potentially leaving that in there is that if at some point over this build out, there does become some kind of reimbursement mechanism, we would still want to be included for whatever-
Hey, eligible for that.
Eligible for that in the future if that ever comes to fruition.
Okay, and we'll continue to look at that, um, I don't think there's a huge- I mean, we'll just- we'll continue to narrow it down on that with our legal process and review. Um, impact fees, um, we already mentioned that we're not comfortable with the language in the impact fees. Um, and I don't know if that was just remnant of a cut and paste on the development agreement by your, um, your attorney. Um, but our intent and the only thing that we're gonna agree to would just be normal impact fees apply, including if impact fees get updated, which we plan on- we're in the process of updating some of them. Um, the only ones we're actively looking at right now are water and sewer. Um, but we potentially will put in a storm drain impact fee we've talked about. And, um, at this point, we're not looking to update our fire, power, I mean, fa- fire, police. Um, we may impact our- we may update our power impact fee. And it may go up or down. Power may actually be higher than it needs to be, we're not sure. Just all gonna be the result of the studies, as you know. Anyways, but we just expect those impact fees to apply and not to be frozen, um.
So, we can green that?
Um, I don't wanna get- if- if we- if we are comfortable with the set zoning, then there's some of this stuff that becomes less of a concern. And I wanna read through the agreement. I wanna have Scott look at it and read through the agreement again. If we're not getting so complex with all the density restrictions and- and at what point it's gonna not be recorded against the deeds and all of that stuff, the- the concern on the densi- on the density restrictions is that some of the ways that the development agreement was written could lead to ways of getting around that and which was- made some concerns on the term and termination of the agreement and running with the land and all of that stuff. So, um, I think reading through that again with a separate eye, I think it's gonna considerably de-complexify, if that's a word, the, uh, agreement. So, I wanna look at that again. Um, default and remedies, we didn't like the judicial proceeding, so we'll probably push back and give some other language and see how your attorney feels about it. We wanted to be able to resolve things with mediation and things, not exclusively going to court. That's pretty much it. I- I said we only had those big items.
That was quick.
That was- that was quick.
You did- you did great. Better than last.
The only thing that I found, just in the conversations about restricted development, there is a section, um, oh, it's in our annexation agreement. And I know it's an old document, but it does give a definition for that, and it's under environmental and land use issues, if you- I don't know if you wanna look at it. But basically, it says, development in sensitive lands will be limited in order to protect, make it a little bigger, and preserve environmentally and geo- geologically sensitive lands in Parwin, which makes sense. It's the hillside. And it says, new development shall be prohibited above-
Where are you reading? Sorry?
It's in the annexation agreement.
In which one?
The one from two thousand and three, your favorite one. But it does-
Oh, an old annexation agreement?
No, it's the Parwin City Annexation-
Our version?
Land, yeah. And that's the only place I could find a definition of sensitive, um, limited development. 'Cause I didn't know if that just meant you have to follow hillside development. But basically, it's talking about fault and earthquake hazards, sub- subsurface rock and soil types, slope of the land, groundwater recharge areas, local groundwater conditions, flood hazards, erosion types, view escapes, flood plains, elevation, cost of city services, wildlife habit, and water quality. So, just because I'm a person who said, hey, I wonder what that means, limited development, that's the only, like, guiding information I could find. But I don't know how that applies to, you know, density and ability to- to, um, do the hillside development. But I wanted to- to talk, you know, at least have it brought up to look at it, because I think it's obviously there for a reason.
What number were you on?
I might have to just show you what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about at all.
Oh, dear, that's not a part- it's not in our agreement. It's in the-
Oh, you're saying in the annexation policy plan?
Yeah.
As what specifically, um, sensitive lands will be limped, will be have limited development because of these reasons? And maybe it's, oh, you know, the hillside doesn't cave, or, you know, who knows? But I thought we should at least look at it. And maybe it's not part of the discussion because it's not six thousand, elevation of six thousand. I mean, we might need to know what that elevation is.
Okay, now, which section were you in?
H. A B C D E F G H.
Oh, that subsection J's wildlife habitat, that whole area is a deer habitat.
So, I think, um, and I'm gonna just jump right out on a ledge here, off the- off the cuff, without looking at it. I think that we are dealing with a- a lot of these things to some degree. We're gonna require soil study as part of the development. Um, this is kind of is like catchall, probably copy pasted out of general developments. For example, I always think it's not hilarious, I think it's actually really scary that they develop on- on active slides. Geologically, they're developing on an active slide in Cedar City right now, undercutting the foothill and luber- lubing the thing up with septic tanks. And you talk to geologists and they're like, that's dumb. Um, ultimately, that comes back to the- the engineer and the soil study and their, you know, the liability- where the liability has shifted. But I think if there's certain things that we're gonna deal with, with slopes and with elevations and stuff, we're gonna deal with- with our, um, hillside development stuff. We've talked about flood plains and dealing with some of that, which we're gonna deal with. So, I think in general, we're dealing with these things. Wildlife habitat, I don't know if we have a specific, um, problem there. I think it would be limited to protected animals like, um, prairie dogs, which they are gonna have to comply with, you know, clearing the land with the- with the county's prairie dog process, the state's prairie dog process. Water quality, we're definitely gonna deal with water quality as we deal with, um, like I said, if we take storm drain and we put it into any natural streams or into our recharge, we're gonna deal with water quality. So, I think we're probably dealing with all those things. I don't know if you have any sort of reaction to that outside of what I just said?
Yeah, I- I- I think that that is probably a catchall, and then it's- it's more fine tuned based on your region. So, that's why I was gonna say, as far as wildlife habitat, I think it's like the- it's the normal things that- As far as wildlife habitat, I think it's like the, it's the normal things that the city already requires, so it'd be your prairie dog, it'd be your FA, it'd be your geo- it'd be your geotech, um, there's places in Enic, I've done things where there's known fissures.
Yep.
And you have to worry, you have to get the fissures mapped, and then you have areas of non-impact, um, that you can't disturb and you can't run pipelines through and, um, so I, I think generally when you look at that list, the city is usually aware of those kind of problem or sensitat- sensitive or wetland areas or, or whatever, and so those, so...
Okay, it was more my curiosity about, you know, what that meant when it said limited, limited development, you know, what did you say?
I said, I liked your first interpretation, though, with, because I was thinking the same thing, R-one that meets the hillside, that's limited.
Yep, no, we know that this, this area is in a general fault quake, but it's not, we don't know of any geological problem. In Mesquite, they let them build on top of an old landfall, landfill, and guess what? It started subsiding and having problems, and so, you know, it's gonna come down to known issues and, and, and some of that is gonna be picked up through all of our different processes. We don't know of any other specific area. Our biggest concern frankly is it's the storm drain impact of, of the foothills. Um, there's the, another one that isn't mentioned, but the state's gonna stay on top of is, is fire, as you build right towards the urban, um...
The Wui.
The Wui, the Wildlife Urban Interface, but that's gonna come down, there's new state law, the state is gonna require individual property owners to pay fees or do mitigation of fuels in, on their properties, and so all these things are gonna apply here.
Okay. That was my other.
The only thing that I was gonna add to it is we, because we were in a, in agreement last time, but was the, uh, the deed water up front? The forty acre feet, so that would get, that would get revised substantially based on, it, not the rates or the forty acre feet up front, but just if we remove the density cap, then it needs to be revised to say, whatever number of lots we come in with, we gotta provide our half acre foot.
Yeah.
And there's, that probably kinda cascades through the document.
And it's gonna, and it's gonna potentially change as, as our, depending on when the subdivision development happens and all of that stuff. As we have to continue to do our studies every five years, our requirement is tied to the studies that we do on that's actual usage. So, our half acre foot is not some randomly picked number, it's actually point four two with the buffer we're allowed to put legally, it just happened to come to exactly five acre foot. So, the forty acre feet now, um, is not the, is not the minimum that's required, but it, but it, it allows you to go ahead and take off, off to the gate and do eighty. We're gonna require the acre footage, no matter what happens per our code at the subdivision level, but this allows you to build eighty without having to deed water. And deeding water is a, is a lo- arduous process, so there's no reason why you wouldn't wanna do it in blocks.
Right, yeah.
So, it makes sense.
Yeah, and we've, yeah, and we generally have banked it in places that will let us bank it, um, but I was just gonna say that when we had the number in there, so the rates...
Yeah, we'd need to update it, agree.
Change, but, but we'd stick to the forty, but if we, if we go up to...
Well, what we'd say is we'd say forty up front and then follow the city code from there on.
Right.
At this, and, and it has to be done at the subdivision, um, before the subdivision final plat is approved, that's what our code says now. So, there's, th- that one stresses me out the very least, because we already have ironclad code, and we would just point to that code in the development agreement.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, any, I, we don't take actions, it's a work meeting.
Yep, we don't, we just needed, we just needed to be able to put things into the agreement, refine these things, and put them into the agreement, kick them over to these guys, work through any of the little stuff, um, schedule a, a public hearing, and, um...
So, it's not coming back tomorrow?
No, no.
No, but we can, we can get this modified, get a copy of it out to you, have Scott do a review of the copy.
You get to come back tomorrow. How about we don't love you that?
You have to wait four hours.
Have Scott do a review of the copy. I'm, I'm sure that there's gonna be, um, some input from their attorney, and there may be some major input on some of these items. I don't know, we'll see, but, so I guess we could, we can wait and see how that goes, and then schedule a public hearing once we kinda feel like we're on the same page, or we could...
So, Dan...
I would be good that way.
Dan, we will get a copy of these changes, these proposed, you know, where we said we'd agree to this, this, and that.
What we'll do is we'll create a document that is a combination of the, the city document and what the developer asked for. Maybe we'll take the developer's comment, co- and then we'll redline that, add these things back in, propose it. We'll give you guys a copy so you're aware of the whole process.
So, they'll have that, where you were putting in the edited, you know, where you were writing in, this is what we will agree to.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll put that all in here.
Okay.
All right, if there aren't any other questions or any further discussion, I just need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
What happened to you saying no?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you mean tomorrow? Aren't we done for this week?